Good afternoon. I'd like to call to order the Planning Commission meeting of December 12th, 2024. At this time, if we can all stand for the moment of silence and Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, omnipotent, taking in justice for all.
Madam Clerk, can you call the roll?
Amy Girardi.
Here.
Christopher Bull.
Here.
Don Moody.
Here.
Matthew Mutt.
Here.
Derek Botles. Richard Mello.
Here.
Chairman Charles Ray.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the Planning Commission is appointed by the Board of County Commissioners and we meet twice a month. The Planning Commission holds public hearings and transmits to the Board of County Commissioners recommendations on rezonings and conditional use requests. The Planning Commission is the final decision-making body for special exceptions, certain appeals, variance requests, and certain alternative standard requests. However, final decisions may be appealed to the Board of County Commissioners. The Planning Commission also serves as the local planning agency, and as the LPA, this body makes recommendations in regard to the consistency with the adopted Pasco County Comprehensive Plan of proposed comprehensive plan amendments and Land Development Code amendments. If anyone is in opposition to any comprehensive plan amendment, land development code amendment, rezoning, conditional use, or any item where the Planning Commission transmits a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners, it is important that you attend the appropriate Board of County Commissioners meeting. I think we have three sets of meeting minutes to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second. Okay, it's a motion to approve the minutes from the August 8th, August 22nd, and September 19th Planning Commission meetings.
Correct.
Motion and second. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now we will take public comment on any non-agenda items. So if you're here to speak to anything that's not on the agenda, now's your time. Before I ask though, we do request that when you address the Planning Commission, comments are not directed personally against a commission member or team member, but rather directed at the issues. This provides mutual respect between the commission members and the public. Is there anyone in the audience here to talk on public items that are not on the agenda?
Chairman, if I may, we have several people signed up for general public comment. We do have a list if you don't mind.
Oh, perfect.
I will note before we go, we don't have anybody signed up on WebEx for general public comment or any of the items today on the agenda. The first name, I believe, on the list is Amy Polczek. And forgive me if I say it wrong.
Good. When you come to the podium, please state your name and address. And then, I do need to, if you plan on giving any testimony today, if you can, please stand and raise your right hand so you can be sworn.
Do you swear before or are you about to give a truce about you got?
Good afternoon. I'm here today to speak on the, oh, I'm sorry. Amy Polczek, 9152 Kenton Road, Wesley Chapel. I'm here today to speak on the purpose and intent of the Comprehensive Plan for the Connected City. My concerns are that within the Connected City Comprehensive Plan Amendment, certain policies are not being met within the special planning area, specifically the community hub zone. This zone intends to create a unique centralized education, recreation, and open space system that is well-connected to each special planning area zone and serves and complements the entire Connected City development. The community hub zone shall be characterized by a potential mix of residential, educational, recreational, civic, cultural, and resort-type uses centered on a central amenity, King Lake. A few of the planning principles for the Connected City are: One, a connected city promotes a healthy lifestyle through planning decisions that support physical activity and movement, as well as access to fresh foods. The Connected City must provide infrastructure that supports wellness as part of the daily routine. This includes opportunities for and access to walking and biking to local commercial areas, parks and recreational uses, schools and civic institutions, fresh local grown produce, and clean water and air. Parks that provide physical space and associated public infrastructure to accommodate a range of passive and active physical activities should be part of these communities. Policy Land Use and Design 4.16 states, "Integrate view corridors, natural habitats, and natural open space systems into the design of the multipurpose paths, multipurpose trails, urban plazas, parks, playgrounds, community centers, and educational entertainment and cultural buildings." This policy aims at using design strategies to not just protect nature, but also integrate it into the built environment so that it becomes an integral part of the everyday live and work experience within the Connected City. Policy Land Use and Design 4.18 enacts land development regulations that allow and encourage land uses, activities, and infrastructure to increase access to healthy food and water within the Connected City Special Planning Area Zones. The land uses and design of the built environment should be such that it provides multiple options for eating healthy nutritious food. This could be achieved by incorporating within the Connected City overlay, community gardens, rooftop greenhouses or gardens, onsite gardening, corner grocery stores, edible landscaping, farmer's market, and other strategies that are dedicated to producing healthy local food options. The second one is to create authentic social gathering spaces. Providing locations for social interactions is essential to creating vibrant communities. It's well documented that social networking is a key factor in the success of innovation districts. These spaces can take form in parks, coffee houses, libraries, and other civic spaces, farmers markets, community gardens, and so forth. A Connected City must provide a series of social gathering opportunities by encouraging uses that attract people. Policy LED 1.20 creates authentic social gathering spaces that are well-integrated into neighborhoods and employment areas. Strategically local as comfortable walking distances are connected through safe and comfortable pedestrian, bicycle, and neighborhood vehicle lengths are easily accessible by people for deferring abilities. And I have a little bit more, but I can have someone else.
Yeah, if you have somebody else, because we do need to limit people to three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you.
I believe the next person on our list is Jennifer. Sorry, Jennifer. Yes.
All right. Hi, I am Jennifer McLeod. I live at 31201 Tyndall Road. And I'm just continuing where Amy left off. Policy 4.21, "Develop mixed-use areas that employ a combination of land use and design strategies to create vibrant, attractive destinations that provide a variety of social gathering spaces. Providing locations for social interaction is essential to creating vibrant communities." These mixed-use areas could include a combination of squares, parks, plazas, tot lots, playgrounds, fresh fruit outlets, cafes, or other shopping or entertainment-based uses that bring people together. It is well documented that social networking is a key factor in the success of innovation districts. Compact, transit-accessible, technically-wired, mixed-use communities that promote innovative thought and economic social development. Promote planning decisions that protect the natural environment. Not only should development plans be sensitive to the county's natural resources and boundaries, but the county should encourage the use of low-impact development techniques to address stormwater runoff and water quality. Implementing these initiatives would offer a wonderful opportunity for children and neighbors to come together as a community, fostering and supporting an authentic, healthy lifestyle. Thank you for your time and consideration today.
Thank you.
Sorry, the second Jennifer.
Hi, Jennifer McCarthy, 8819 Kenton Road. So I guess I'd like to discuss how the current residents of the Connected City have been treated the last 10 years. So we've been coming to these meetings for 10 years. I've spoken to you. You probably maybe recognize me. I don't know. I got run off my road yesterday, my private, non-county-maintained road, because there's construction traffic coming from Marada. Nobody will take this approach, and nobody will help stop it. It's a single-lane road. Nobody helps try to keep traffic off of it. And as this area continues to grow, it's not safe for me to leave my house. So one issue there is that the development is not keeping up with the infrastructure. So you guys are going to build a new Kenton Road. Okay, great. Well, that was approved two years ago. There's no new Kenton Road. Everybody's continuing to cut up our road. When we were talking with commissioners and 10 years ago with, what was it, Ted, Tim, one of the Ts, when they were, when this in Pasadena Hills was getting, they're like, you know, there's going to be step-ups. If you guys decide that you're going to stay, great. We want properties like yours. We won't put things directly next to you that are going to impact you. You're not going to be next to townhomes. You're not going to be next to four-story apartments. But guess what is getting approved next to our properties? So we can't build within 20 feet of our property line, but you guys can take 150 acres directly next to us, and then they can build up to five feet? So things like that shouldn't be happening. There should be some sort of step-up in the density. And I just don't think that that's happened. So, you know, we want to be good neighbors. The developers say they want to be good neighbors to us. They have not been. Nobody has, all you're seeing is unfortunately more for-sale signs. Then you have people that work for the county, a director, going on CBS News and saying, anybody that lives in the Connected City that's not part of a development should just plan to pack up and move. So CBS News, a year ago, never, I wrote email after email to him. He never responded back to me because I wanted to speak about his public comments. So this is, you know, Amy and the other Jennifer spoke about what the Connected City should have been, and that's a vision, and what is there is not. If you guys, if you, not you guys, but if everything is the last parcels, if these are all approved, there is no way. Where are we putting the libraries? Where are you putting the parks? Where are you putting these open spaces? It was the only thing I was maybe kind of excited about, right? Like, my six-year-old might be able to have friends in the neighborhood that she, because there's some things going close, but you can't. Nothing's accessible. The park, Wesley Chapel District, the Board, one meeting the Board of County Commissioners said, hey, the park, Wesley Chapel District Park, you can't get there on golf carts. People try, and if you've driven down that area, it's incredibly dangerous. So why not have a park in that area to accommodate these people? And everybody, I mean, so again, I think the vision needs to be looked at. It hasn't been, it's not what is there. So that's my point, is that I think this needs to be paused until this is reviewed. And I think anybody looking to develop in this area should be not just responsible for their parcel, but including a spec on how this fits into the big picture. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
The next person on the list is David Torino.
My name's David Torino. I live at 9350 Kenton Road. I've got a problem with your water. I've had a problem with your water ever since you started to develop across the lake. My property's been flooded. My property's three foot above high watermark right now. My dock has been flooded and destroyed. You guys told me, was it you guys, I was told by some of the commissioners, I won't mention their names because you don't want me to mention names, but I talked to two of them. I wouldn't get a drop of water on my property. I didn't get a drop. I got feet of water. Feet! I haven't been able to get back to the lake back there, and that's what I moved there for. I moved there, I bought the land in 85. I moved there in 95. I built a beautiful home that I was going to retire and die in. Because I love the fish. That's what I built for. I haven't seen that lake in eight years. Eight years of my life is gone. I love the fish, gentlemen, and I haven't been able to, and that's not right. You guys told me that I wouldn't see a drop of water. One comes out there and says, man, somebody dropped the ball. That's not helping me. Not helping me at all. I want to get back there. That's my courage. Thank you.
The next one on our list is Chris Torino.
Chris Torino, 9422 Kenton Road. I've got much more to say to what he did. Sifted the water, went under my home this time. I went through two hurricanes. The water didn't even come up on my property hardly. It was gone within two, three weeks. We don't have two, three weeks no more. We go months. We used to mow to the lake. Ain't mowed to the lake in eight, nine years now. Yeah, I don't know what you, you know, everybody says, you know, they come out and look at it and say, well, you got a problem, that's for sure. They don't do nothing. It keeps getting worse, not better. You keep building, it gets worse. That's about all I can say to add to him. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next one on the list is Steve Stanley. Oh, you're not for general public comment. You're for a piece. So the next one on the list is Nancy Hazelwood.
Nancy Hazelwood, 34110, nice place. That came up pretty fast. I've got a litany of things. First off, they're deciding to put a well field in the northeast protected area, and we don't need it because we're all well-inseptic, and we have large lots that help keep us rural and protected. So we are not liking that. And now we're hearing they might want to put a wastewater treatment plant there too. And it wouldn't be for us. It'd be for developing northeast protected area, which it, that's not what we bargained for when we exchanged it for Pasadena Hills. I was wondering why the board continues to listen to the same people who represent development communities when they have failed over and over again to follow through with what they have promised to do on their projects. And it's been agreed on and is in the application by the board, and it isn't followed through. Something else happens. Maybe it's where a road was supposed to be not put, and they came back and decided to put it there again, even though it had been voted so that the citizens wouldn't have to have their little community with a lot of traffic. This reflects back on the boards. Y'all said that this was going to be this way, and now it's not. If you want your word to stand for something, this needs to be remedied somehow. I have a couple of other short things. I would respectfully ask, probably planning, for the 10th time over the last 15 years, for the planning staff to work on conflicted zoning in the northeast rural protected area. We're running into it again. And so, one of them is that things are coming up in the rural area plan like employment centers, and there's no conditions put on it. It's a conflict zoning within northeast rural and has the capacity to, again, make high density in northeast rural and more sprawl. We don't have it yet. We're probably the one place that doesn't. One more here. Nope, I'll wait. Y'all are lucky. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy.
So the next one on our list for general public comment is Phil Singletary.
My name is Philip Singletary. Live at 8723 Kenton Road. Back in the 1980s, my wife and I brought our small family and lived out there, very rural. We moved out of Hillsboro County to get away from exactly what's happening to us right now. There's nothing we can do with what's already happened with the Epperson property, the Cannon property. But what I see going on now is the development that's going to happen across the street from us, we do live on a private road. And it's only a half a mile long. These gentlemen used to live on a private road, but the county came and bought it. And no one maintains our road. I have multiple trees on the fence line, and the developers that promised us, who bought that property, that they would not kill any of our trees. Okay. Well, it's my understanding now that somebody else has bought that contract, and somebody else is going to do it. So I was wondering if they were going to be able to honor that contract. Another thing too is the developers that are going to develop the property across the street from us, where a four-lane, the new Kenton Road's supposed to go, is going to be elevated three feet. Now, we live at the bottom. It's not much of a hill, but there is an incline in the property value. I mean, yes, the evolutions, and the water does come down into our property. So we got three feet coming on our east side. You've got the Fosa property down on the other end of Kenton, going to be elevated when they develop their property. And you've got property being developed now on Tyndall and close to Tyndall. So what you're basically doing is you're pushing all that water into a bowl, which is going to affect Jennifer, these gentlemen here, everybody that lives on that road. And that could mean that we may have to get flood insurance. Right now, we don't have to have flood insurance. And that could cost us the value of our property. We've been through multiple hurricanes. I have never, never seen the damage that these gentlemen have gone through on their property. King Lake has never flooded like that. So I'm just thinking, where is this water going to go when you elevate the surroundings of our property? I hope you all are just taking consideration that the people that are building these things don't live here. They don't care. The Planning Commission is supposed to look out for the people that live here, not just for the people that are trying to build there. So if your engineers can do something to make it look, make it more livable and passable, talk about the traffic. One second. Coming down Elam the other day, I was turning on our private road. I had to make a left-hand turn. There's a golf cart track on the side of the road. Cars are passing me on the golf cart track. I'm going on a private road. I don't want to put up a gate. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
So the next person I have on my list is Kristi Zimmerman. Zimmerman? Zimmerman?
Good afternoon, gentlemen. It's so good to see you. First of all, I want to say thank you. Thank you for volunteering your time to be Planning Commissioners. Some of you are on payroll, some of you are not. You take away from your businesses, your personal lives to be here and do these decisions, and it's not always easy. And you do get a lot of crap thrown at you, threatening lawsuits and such. So I just want to take a minute and say thank you for your time. We appreciate you, believe it or not. Hearing these people talking about, you don't see what the long-term impact is?
Kristi, just for the record, just state your name and address.
Kristi Zimmer, 3615 Pinecone Court, Lanex.
They just got to get it recorded.
Thank you. Hearing what they're saying about, you may not realize the long-term impact of what you're approving and what you're hoping they're going to actually follow through and do with. Let me give you a couple examples. Connerton, been there a while, been growing for a while. Not just the storms, flood, errand cutoff now, the rain we had yesterday. The rain we had yesterday, which was just minutes, flooded, air and cut-off again. During the storms and the big-time flooding, the tractors never stopped out there. They're piling up dirt, they're creating more problems, and the flooding is not going to get in, is not going to end. It's going to get worse for those people who have lived there for many decades. I know many of them. The other one is the project at the corner of Collier Parkway and Fifty-four, the shopping center where Publix is now. The deal was, okay, it was a horse farm, Woodsby Farm. You're going to build this to look like a horse farm, and they put topiaries out there that were required as per the plan. It looks nothing like a horse farm now. The topiaries have been long gone. Nobody's followed through, nobody polices these projects, nobody makes them do what they say they're going to do. You pass it, but where's the, the follow-up? Where's the, the authority that says you're not doing what you're supposed to be doing in these communities that we approved? Because it's not happening. And we, the people out here, are having to bear that brunt. Thank you.
Thank you.
So the next one on the list is Kim Briarly, and I just want to make sure she wants to speak on general public comment.
Kim Briarly, eight, nine, four, six, Old Pasco Road. And I'd like to start by thanking the people who let me know about the meetings since I wasn't noticed of the meeting, and I have a little bit of problem being noticed of things that are going on, like, right near me. So, thank you to those who let me know. Um, I'm going to piggyback on a lot of the things that were said, and then I'll speak again later as well. But, um, every time something gets built in the general area of my house, it's built up several more feet than it was, and, like, the fishbowl scenario was perfect. I keep saying I'm at the bottom of a valley, because we've had storms before, and nothing impacted my property like what we just had with Helene and Milton. And it, I've never seen anything like it, and I just, I can't imagine if we lose everything. We have flood insurance. That doesn't get you your things back. It gives you what somebody feels like your things were worth. And I don't want to go through that. I'd like to have everything slowed down until we can actually figure out what's going to be good for the county and what's actually going to push out the citizens who love this county, and make them move somewhere else when they don't want to. They want to stay where they bought and love. And so, I'll speak again later, but thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, so the last one I have signed up for general public comment is Michael Pultorak.
And we did give Michael extra time as requested yesterday?
Thank you, sir. Michael Pultorak.
Ten minutes.
Nine, one, five, two, Kenton Road, but I'm representing the Pasco Connected City Residents Group. Oh, perfect. Thank you, young lady. So I'd like to talk about the comprehensive plan for the Connected City, but before I do that, I would like to point out, all of our friends and neighbors and family, East County and West County, that were flooded out, and some are still flooded out, and have still not made it back to their homes. They are in our thoughts and prayers, and we're not going to forget about it. We all need to stand up and keep that as a hot issue going forward, so that we can provide accountability to not just future residents, but the current residents. Second item is, I'd like to thank you, gentlemen, because I do not envy your position. You guys have to balance a lot of things on your table, on your plate. And I do not envy your positions, and I do appreciate all of you for trying to work with us and find the best for current and future residents as we balance these things out. What I'd like to touch on is where we're currently at with the Connected City, its development, how it has developed, and what was promised to the residents and the future residents years ago. The, the group that I'm representing, by the way, is now six-hundred-and-eighty-one members, as of ten minutes ago. And I'd like to thank a bunch of our neighbors for showing up and speaking today about these issues. There's a lot of individuals that didn't know today's meeting was going to happen, and, um, I promise we're going to continue to push forward for proactive ways to meet the needs of all of our residents. For those at home that don't know, the Connected City was started in twenty-fifteen with a Senate bill. Part of this Senate bill, with the basis of it being a pilot program for the state in coordination with Metro Developments, the Connected City was going to be established as a pilot program. The oversight for the project was going to be pushed or given to local authority because of the level of experience and knowledge of local authority to oversee the project. That's kind of important as we go forward here. In twenty-eighteen, I believe it was, the master plan for the Connected City, I believe that's the year that it was published and given national acclaim and won its awards for how amazing of an opportunity this was going to be to develop in Pasco County. This is an overhead SPA zone map. You gentlemen know, there's five districts, the northern and southern innovation zones, community hub, the urban core, and then the business district. I'd like to give some credit to Metro Developments, because the southern innovation zone and the northern innovation zone primarily are housing, and they've done a beautiful job. There's been some hiccups, we've found some roads that they forgot, through roads that they forgot to build. I don't think that was necessarily a Metro Developments issue, maybe some accountability issue, maybe some oversight that we were missing in those projects, i.e. Kenton Road that was supposed to go through to overpass prior to any developments on the existing Kenton Road. A number of items in the master plan include putting people first, healthier lifestyles, sustainable living, local healthy food, as the young lady before mentioned, outdoor areas, vibrant, open-air meeting places for the community, recreational locations for the community hub. This is straight out of the master plan, and it highlights some of what the young lady before was speaking about, with community gardens, farmers' markets, open recreational areas, large, open areas where the community and its developments, all of its residents, can come together and meet and live life together outside of just walking into more pavement and non-permeable surfaces. These are some of the pictures that were sold and marketed to us, and it looks like a bunch of happy people. It sounds great. We want to be there too with them. Uh, some of the pictures from the marketing, the community gardens, the open areas, the recreational areas. This is straight from the marketing for Marada. I'd like to highlight miles of well-maintained trails that connect residents with the great outdoors. The area around Marada is known for birdwatching and is home to beautiful native flora and fauna. This is the first example of where I'd like to start highlighting where we're missing the intended purpose and intent. Outside of Marada, across the street from it, is the Sand Hill Development. It's already approved, it's already happening. There was one existing stand of timber, about twelve acres, and it was century live oak, standing pine, and native citrus. This week, this is what it looks like. That's where the birds were, the amazing birds, flora, and fauna. Every tree you see in the picture is being knocked down and burned, so that we can make a ten-acre storm pond. Not sure how necessarily all of the purpose and intents are coming together. There specifically, with the pilot program, straight out of the master plan, it's supposed to highlight libraries, emergency services, law enforcement, et cetera. Per our new fire chief, we do not have a fire station designated for the, quote, "hundred thousand people the Connected City are going to bring in." The Connected City Fire Station is on the west side of I-75. And I can't imagine a fire station on the other side of the interstate, in correlation with the San Antonio Fire Station and the east of Epperson Fire Station, can accommodate emergency services inside the Connected City with the density we're referring to. So there's no fire station on the table. It is not in the master plan. This is what we were sold for the business district. These are some beautiful buildings for the growing high-tech, high-paying jobs and businesses that we were hoping to bring in. What's being marketed commercially right now is seventy-five logistics. It's going to be five-point-five million square feet of industry and targeted distribution centers. Over two million square feet is going to be distribution centers. I'm not sure how many people still haven't figured this out yet, but Amazon and every other distribution center is going to automated services. So if we're going to bring in employment in an EOD, the Emergent, the Employment Opportunity District, we should be considering industries that are going to bring jobs with them and not eliminate the jobs while they're tying up the ground space. In the same area, right down the street from it, in the middle of the Connected City, we have a commercial ice rink on a two-lane dirt road. Not sure how this is responsible as far as our planning goes. Again, these are the districts, and to highlight the southern innovation zone, even though they've done a beautiful job, is a, centered with a private fancy community pool. The northern innovation zone is primarily the metro housing fancy, private community pool. We're not invited there, by the way. And the employment district and the urban business core. The, not business core, the urban core. The urban core is important because, if we dig into it a little bit, this project received national acclaim in twenty-eighteen. Two years later, Pasco County decided to put a multimillion-dollar fleet operations center where we're supposed to have the high-density business core, the urban core. This is where the coffee shops, the four-story buildings are going. This is how we spent our money in Pasco County. Two years after, we're supposed to be rezoning and planning for the urban core. This is an overhead of what was built. The community hub is what's really on our minds right now, because it is specifically where the onsite gardening, farming, et cetera, is supposed to go, which includes a lot of recreational area and the outdoor space where the different developments for the hub can come together. I'm going to have to zoom through some of this, so I apologize. But this is where the civic, cultural, recreational, outdoor, and the gem, King Lake, which we've now figured out can't be included for public use, is supposed to be hubbed around. The district park we were promised has been reallocated to the east side of Pasadena Hills, and from the heart of the Connected City, that's ten miles away. The items from the intent and purpose for this project were to get cars off the road. I'm not sure how many golf carts are going to go ten-point-six miles to get to our district park. This is a picture of the future school, and it includes sports programs. That's going to be important. This must have been a local designer, because the building right there looks like the Hundred Year Storm already happened, because it's got water on three sides of it. Division Zero outlines what this was supposed to be about. Okay? The reason the school, I wanted to highlight it is important is because Pasco County was given the instructions to not burden Pasco County residents with the expense of this pilot program. The school is designed now, from what I understand, Mr. Tanella, maybe you can help us, is now designed to be a charter school. I cannot find a charter school in Pasco County that has a full sports program. They can't afford the property, and so they don't, they can't afford the sports programs, they don't have it. So if we're going to charter out the school and the high school there that's supposed to serve the Connected City, how are we supposed to do this without sports programs, without the recreational area, and without the open spaces that are all supposed to go into the hub? Really quickly, just to, I will make this quick, I promise. Can you help me, young lady? I'll go right back to it. Yeah, just back, 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 I'm sorry. While she's getting there, the connected hub, uh, let's go back, right there, stop, thank you. Okay, so just so you gentlemen can be on the same page with me, this is the, the community hub. Every red box is already packaged for developers or current housing. All of it, except for one parcel. The parcel on the top left with the gray stars on it. That's the last remaining parcel that has not been already rezoned for purpose. And everything else is housing. We have not received any of the recreational or open airspace. That's the last one left. It's going to be a hot topic. I promise, the people of the Connected City are very passionate about being given what they were promised when this came around. That's the overhead, as we zoom in a little bit, that one parcel touches four different districts from the Connected City. So we are asking you to please keep in mind, with the community hub, we have not been given the recreational area, the open space, the outdoor pavilions, the civic centers, and this could all be incorporated. Our group would like to come forward in the near future and present an alternative development plan for that parcel, which includes one of the beautiful pavilions. The, Amy spoke ahead on her PowerPoint earlier. Can I steal that picture, by the way? Boardwalks to protect the three wetlands, the community gardens. We can, we have a plan that would help restore the integrity of the project as a whole if you will work with us in trying to make the last piece of the pie work for the community. Thank you, gentlemen, for what you do. Thank you, gentlemen, for your time. Thank you for allowing me to go over, and we really appreciate you guys. Thanks for working with us.
Very well, thanks, Paul. Liam, is there anybody else?
That was our last person signed up in person for general public comment.
Okay.
Sorry, I was just kind of late. I was supposed to...
Yeah, go ahead and come on up. And this, just, I know you walked in late. This is just public comment for anything not on the agenda. If you're here to just talk about anything on the agenda, you have to speak when the item comes up. And then, um, give you a second. When you get up here, I don't think you were here for the swearing-in, so when you get to the podium, I'll need you to, uh... When you get to the podium, I need you to raise your right hand and be sworn, please.
You swear from testimony you're about to give, it's a truce of God.
Yeah.
And then, please state your name and address.
Tanya Riddlesworth, eight, seven, three, four, McEntree Road. This is, um, I think, going to be the new slogan, if we don't change something. If you can see here, disconnected city. We are no longer going to be the connected city, we will be the disconnected city unless something changes. You guys had a great plan, or the state had a great plan, Metro had a great plan, I don't know who came up with it first. But, um, it was a great plan, and I was there at the meetings ten years ago, um, before I bought my property. I was nervous about buying it. Went to those meetings, um, I was sold on this, this great concept, this idea that looks like it would be a fantastic place to raise my family. Um, it is not turning out to what we thought it was going to be. It's a lot of homes, a lot of apartments. Um, you're building this double branch, uh, it doesn't look like it's going to be a great town center where we, we're going to want to go. It looks like it's just going to be distribution space. Um, we don't know where the green space is going to be, just like kind of everybody's kind of been saying here, where's the green space? So we have, uh, the Wesley Chapel District Park, we have a park in the villages of Pasadena Hills. Those are not in Connected City. So if that was what you guys had intended of doing, was saying, well, you've got these parks over here and over here, then that should have been told to us, not, you're going to have green space within the Connected City. Um, as you can see from the map that was just shown, the particular parcel that will be discussed later is in the center of Connected City, would be a great spot to put a park. I don't want to really speak too much on that, because I know that's specific. Um, but I also wanted to mention about the roads. Um, there are a couple of main roads, the Kenton Road and McEntree Road, that are main through roads connecting the south part of Connected City with the northern part of Connected City. And currently, there are still dirt roads with, um, no kind of line, timeline in sight of when those are going to be fixed. I know Kenton, the developer is supposed to fix out when they build the... I know Kenton, the developer is supposed to fix out when they build the property, April there. But McCandry Road, there's nobody that's set up to pave that road. You've got a major double branch on the north side of the road connecting what will be a hospital on the south side of the road and a dirt road in between. And I guess until the residents decide to sell, which maybe is the intent, that road will remain a dirt road because you guys have decided you're going to just leave it to the developers to pave it when those residents sell to developers, which we don't want to sell. I guess some people might, but there's many of us that don't want to sell. So is that going to remain a dirt road connecting these two major things? I just want to mention, there was a development a while back. I think it was a couple of years ago. I don't know if you guys remember it, on Hule Road, H-U-L-E. I don't know if you remember that development real quick, but at that time, you guys did deny the rezoning there because you said the road was subpar. The homes, I think it was like 106 homes that were going to be built next to rural community, did not go in line with the vibe of the community and the agricultural type of properties there. You guys actually voted to deny it, to not approve that rezoning. And so I think that, you know, that kind of mindset needs to be brought back here to the Connected City and, you know, not approve things that are not in line with the idea of the Connected City, the green spaces, the libraries, the community. So let's just get back to that idea that you guys did approve a couple of years ago.
All right. Thank you, Tanya.
Thank you.
Okay, that's it. Yeah, David, do you want to say a few things?
Yes, thank you. I'll be very brief. My name is David Engel. I'm the Planning and Economic Development Director for Pasco County. I'm not here to rebut the comments that were made. I'm just here to update the public, as well as the commission, on some of the things that are taking place that are attempting to address some of these perceived problems and issues that the public has. Number one, the Board of County Commissioners is requiring now that binding concept plans be submitted with MPUDs to hold a level of accountability on these large planned unit developments. We're working vigorously towards a definition of binding plan, and we will be presenting that to the board shortly. Number two, the stormwater situation has ravaged many areas of the county. According to the National Weather Service, the level of rainfall from Milton exceeded the 200-year storm event statistically. We realize that the climates are changing. We had Debbie, we had Helene, and then Milton. All, you know, and the ground was saturated, there was no place for water to go. The board has directed us to map out through our GIS system where the damage is, and the board will be holding a workshop shortly to talk about ways that we could step up our regulation of stormwater management to mitigate these problems in the future. Thirdly, on open space and preservation and the way we develop property, the board has directed us, and we will have, a more aggressive tree preservation and tree mitigation program in front of the board for adoption in the next 60 days. We're just finishing up on the increased fees to the development community. On the Business District in Connected City, I, you know, we had the board meeting on Tuesday. Some of the people came out and spoke about the fact that we're not maintaining the Connected City employment model, but they weren't aware that on that board consent agenda was an approval for double branch to increase their entitlements by 3 million square feet, moving away from the distribution model and advancing life sciences and advanced manufacturing. So they did that. The county didn't pay them an extra nickel, so they're going to reprogram some of their marketing strategies. And also, there is an active entertainment gathering component of double branch. It may not be visible to you, but it was approved in the original MPUD. And we are proceeding with planning and design of that. We're also working vigorously in connecting Tyndale Road through VOPH in northern Connected City to get people to the jobs and people to the entertainment and entertainment. And that's underway right now also. So that's basically the overview. Again, I'm not trying to rebuttal anybody. I'm just trying to keep the information current and constant. And I heard this week that the board has invited Metro Development to come in and give us an update on Connected City, so that'll be at a public meeting. Thank you.
David Freely, I think about a year ago, the board asked for a workshop on both the villages of Pasadena Hills and Connected City. And to the best of my knowledge, I realize this predated you, but to the best of my knowledge, those workshops have not occurred yet. So is there a plan of action to, for the board to kind of hear an update on where we stand in Connected City?
Yes, as I just said, we've, there was an invitation sent out to Metro Development to appear in front of the board and give us an update and discuss the fact, you know, what's going on in the ground and how we're going to accomplish the ambitious goals at Connected City. Number two, on VOPH, the board has directed a workshop on their financial plan, but we're convening an analysis using Bill Oliver as our consultant to evaluate the financial plan and report back to the board. And we're working on that right now, sir.
Okay.
If I would, I was just going to say, if anybody, you know, during the meeting, we could talk afterwards if anybody wants to speak with me as far as the school things. And also, our doors open, our phone lines are open. You can call us, go to Pasco Schools, Department's Planning Department, and we'd speak to you about anything. So please contact us anytime you want us to talk.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I believe we still have one more person for general public comment. I don't know if you're still accepting general public comment.
Absolutely not. Yeah, go ahead. Okay. While he's getting sworn in, is there anybody else that walked in late that did not get sworn that intends to speak? All right, by yourself.
You swear upon the testimony you're about to give as a truce of God?
Feel like I'm getting married. My name is Roger Mendoza, 8941 Kenton Road. I'm literally ordering the south side of the Faza Ranch, where the, our horn is going to be. I'm going to start with this little thing. I'm going to basically kind of end it with it. Feel like we're not really being listened to. I don't know if we, how much we can say about the green things and the green acres that we want and the things that we really want, but the things that we've been promised, et cetera. I don't think we've been actually been listened to. I've been living there for about 14 years, and we have a nonprofit that we run from our home. We've been losing a lot of revenue because of not only flooding. People can't get down our road. We have a private road, as well as part of like where Mr. Singletary is. So we have a private road in that half-mile stretch. And it's hard to come down that road, especially when there's a lot of water and there's a lot of degradation to the road as well. But part of it is that, one of the things that is that they put in the Faza is they're going to be putting this plastic wall, PVC wall. And have you guys walked around, and I even walked around, maybe like driven around and seen all those PVC fences all over the place? We have kids in our autistic, they're autistic, and they're prone to going into water. There's going to be a 400-foot retention pod, like literally on the other side of that fence. Literally on the side of that fence. So how would you have that in the conscience of not only yourselves, but the commissioners and the developers if something happened to a person or a kid that was wanting to go to water? You know, I don't have flood insurance just because I don't have a pool. I don't have a lake behind me or anything like that. But I want to be able to use my land as nature because that's what I bought it for. You know, I bought it for nature, and we all want to be in nature. Like Mr. Singletary's, you know, make sure you pay respect to the trees. You know what I mean? That's something that we ask for. And from the last meeting, not only from the Faza, but Aprilie, I know that there's kind of changed and there's like a second segment going on, et cetera, et cetera. We're supposed to have a dead end from our private road all the way to Elan. But somehow it changed on the next one where it says we're going to have a pass-through from Kenton Road, from our private road back into Kenton Road. You could just imagine how much the traffic is, that people trying to bypass the new Kenton Road to get off into our private road and then go back in. That's going to make us a nightmare. And not only that, but a lot of us have businesses at our houses. We have livestock at our houses. We have kids at our houses. And we, I don't even close the gates anymore because my kids just run. They have 10 acres to play with. You know what I mean? So part of it is that we want to have nature to be nature, and we want to be listened to. And we want to have those things that were promised to us to be fulfilled. Thank you.
Thanks for coming out. Anybody else from, anybody else in the audience? Okay, anybody from here want to say anything? Okay. And I do want to thank everybody for coming out. I mean, your voices have been heard. As David stated in the things that he said, the county has heard. I know the board heard you guys at the last meeting when you made your presentation at the last meeting. I know we brought this up at the last planning commission meeting that was here about Connected City issues and about wanting to see the overall picture in a whole rather than just the individual projects in a bubble. So your voices are being heard, things are being looked at, and just, you know, we appreciate you being here, so. With that, we're going to move on to the public hearing portion of the agenda. For those of you that have not been at our meetings before, our meetings are typically broken up into three sections. There's a continuance section, those are continuous items, and there are two continuance items on the agenda today. Then we have consent items. Those are items that are recommended for approval, and unless they're pulled from the agenda, will be approved all at one time. There are seven of those items. And then there's a regular item portion of the agenda, which there's one regular item on the agenda today as well. If you're here to speak to anything on the agenda, in-person participants and then participants attending through WebEx, which I don't think we have any today, if they pre-register to speak, they'll be notified by county staff when they're permitted to speak. Applicants will be limited to five minutes, and other participants will be limited to three minutes unless additional time is approved, at least 24 hours in advance. When you come to the podium again, please announce the following before you start speaking. And please state that you have been sworn or acknowledge that you've been sworn. Please state your name, your address, and the agenda item number or agenda title that you'll be speaking to. And then the three- or five-minute timer will start. Okay, so, Madam Clerk, do we have proof?
Yeah, I have it for advertising attached to May Times, September 18, 2024, October 23, 2024, November 6, 2024, and November 27, 2024, by affidavit, by certified mail, and by post.
Thank you, my apologies. Sir. All right, Liam, you want to start?
Yes, good afternoon, Liam Devine, Planning, Development, and Economic Growth Department. Item PC 4, PDE 25-7848. It is a special exceptional request in the name of 52 Property LLC, Travel Care Board and RV Storage SR 52. This is coming with a request to continue the item to January 9, 2025, to the PC meeting in Dade City at 1:30.
Okay, is there anybody here to speak to this item? Okay.
PC 5, PDE 25-7651. It's a zoning amendment in the name of Tall Timbers MPUD, Extreme Team 41 LLC. This is coming with a request to continue the item to the January 9 meeting in 2025. PC meeting in Dade City at 1:30 PM.
Is this a staff-requested continuance?
Ooh, I believe it is. I believe it is, but I can confirm that if you want.
Is the applicant available to confirm they're okay with their continuance?
Because we asked the applicant directly, could they... When we made a motion for a continuance the last time, we asked, would 60 days be more applicable? And they said they would be ready by today.
If you give me a moment, I can find out. Let me see if it's in their agenda packet.
I think Patrick's coming to save the day.
I don't know about save the day, but maybe provide an answer. There were specific conditions that I think we needed to work out in terms of potentially timing of construction of the non-residential components. And I think we're still working through what that condition looks like. And I think between staff and the applicant, we need more time to figure out what that looked like.
So, Patrick, just to confirm, the applicant is okay with this continuance, I assume? Because the question was, was this initiated by staff or the applicant? Was it?
Sure. So, and just to be quick, so Gavin, who was the planner on this, he's out with the flu. So I'm kind of picking up the pieces a little bit on it. I'm not quite sure if it was applicant or staff requested.
Is the applicant aware of the continuance?
I believe that, yes, it's been communicated to them.
Okay. Are they here or online now?
I do not believe they're here.
Okay.
Okay, is that all the continuance items?
That is the two continuance items, yes.
Move to continue items, PC 4 and PC 5, to the January 9 meeting in Dade City.
Second.
All right, motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Can we ask for, if anyone is here to comment on PC 5?
Do you have comment on PC 5?
No, I didn't know if we asked for it.
Oh, is there anybody here to speak on PC 5? I'm sorry, you're correct, Matt, I did not.
Just to be clear, since it was noticed as a continuance, you don't have to take public comment.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. No further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
PC 6, we have somebody who has signed up to speak on this, so PC 6 will be polled. PC 7, PDE 25-7785. It is a zoning amendment in the name of New York Avenue Business Park LLC, Diagonal Road Business Park. It's a change in zoning from R2 Low Density Residential District and C2 General Commercial District to I1 Light Industrial Park District. It's located on the southeast corner of the intersection of Diagonal Road and New York Avenue. This is coming with a recommendation for approval.
Okay, is the applicant present? Is there anybody here to speak on this item? PC, this is PC 7, not PC 6.
Yeah, no problem.
Are you here to speak on PC 7? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. So you're here to speak, so we're going to poll PC 7? Yes, we're going to poll PC 7.
Okay. PC 8, PDE 25-7839. It's a zoning amendment in the name of Sarah Jones Barnyard Rezoning. It's a change in zoning from AC Agricultural District to AR Agricultural Residential District. It's on the east side of Powerline Road, approximately a quarter mile north of Freeze Hill Road. This is coming with a recommendation for approval.
Okay, is the applicant present? Is there anybody here to speak on this item? Okay.
PC 9, you're sitting as the local planning agency. PDE 25-0015, a comprehensive plan amendment, CPAL, CPA 24-05, State Road 54 Office, providing for a small-scale comprehensive plan amendment to the future land use map 2-15 and Sheet 21, changing from RES 12, residential 12 dwelling units per acre to OF Office and con conservation lands on approximately 0.95 of an acre of real property located on the north side of State Road 54, approximately 150 feet west of Camp Indian Head Road and State Road 54 intersection. This is coming with a recommendation that the LPA find that the proposed amendment consistent with a comprehensive plan.
Okay, is the applicant present?
Yes.
Is there anybody here to speak on this item? Okay.
PC 10, you're also sitting as the local planning agency. PDE 25-0047, it's a comprehensive plan amendment, CPAS 24-08, Wesley Chapel Professional Office, providing for a comprehensive plan amendment to the future land use map 2-15 and Sheet 22, changing from RES 6, residential 6 dwelling units per acre, to con commercial on approximately 0.94 of an acre of real property located on the southeast corner of the intersection of Veridian Way and State Road 54. This is coming with a recommendation that the local planning agency finds the proposed amendment consistent with a comprehensive plan.
Okay, is the applicant present? Is anybody here to speak on this item? Okay, we'll keep it on the consent.
PC 11, we do have some housekeeping to do. There was an update to Attachment 1 from your agenda packet of the second map, updating the proposed... updating the proposed Hudson Water Works Wellhead Map and as well as map two dash one, attachment two of your agenda packet, which is exhibit A, updating that map as well, that has been provided to the clerk's office and should have been provided to you, but I will make sure staff passes that out to you with those corrections.
Can we get a motion to receive and file?
Motion.
Motion and a second, since there was two motions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries.
So, PC eleven, PDE twenty-five dash zero zero six one, it is a comprehensive plan amendment, CPA twenty-four dash zero six, Wells, Wellfields, and Wellhead Protection Area Map, providing for a comprehensive plan amendment to the future map, future land use map two dash one, Wells, Wellfields, and Wellhead Protection Area, providing for additional tax amendment as necessary for internal consistency. This is coming with a recommendation that the local planning agency finds that the proposed amendment consistent with a comprehensive plan. Again, you're sitting as the local planning agency.
Okay, is the applicant present?
This is staff's.
Staff initiated. How about, is there anybody here to speak on this item? Okay, so we'll pull that one from consent as well.
Um, PC twelve, we have somebody signed up to speak on that item, so we would need to poll that. And then, um, P thirteen is already a regular item.
Okay, so the consent agenda is PC eight, PC nine, and PC ten?
That would be the remaining consent agenda.
The remaining consent agenda, correct.
Yes.
Correct.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
We recommend approval of items PC eight, PC nine, and PC ten as, as our consent agenda.
Second.
All right, motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries.
So, we are going back to PC six. PDE twenty-five dash seven eight four five, in the name of BDI Properties US LLC, TLE Wells Road. This is a special exception request for a daycare center and veterinarian clinic. Um, the current zoning is AR, the future land use is rez one. The applicant proposes, um, the applicant is requesting to develop the property with a daycare center for a hundred and sixty children and a four thousand square foot veterinarian clinic in conformance with the AR Agricultural Residential District standards. It's located on the south corner of the intersection of Wells Road and Curly Road. It's located in the central market area and is outside of the urban concentration and rural areas. Here's a zoomed out area. Here's a little bit of a zoomed in. The surrounding future land use is rez one and rez three to the north, to the east, south, and west is all rez one. The surrounding zoning to the north is AC, AR, and MPUD. To the east is AC and to the south and west is AR. The subject site is undeveloped on approximately two point zero eight acres. There used to be, there, there used to be a mobile home on the site. The use proposed for a daycare center and veterinarian clinic are both special exception uses under AR, under the land development code. And I would actually note that the site actually already has an approved special exception, so this would be modifying that. That approved special exception is from August eleventh, two thousand and four, from Planning Commission that approved a two hundred student daycare center in, for this site. So, this would actually be a reduction of forty students. Here's the concept, sorry, here's the concept plan. And this is coming with a recommendation for approval from Planning Development Economic Growth Department.
Okay, is the applicant present? One, one second.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Um, I do have a presentation, but staff did a great job. If I can just say a couple words.
Sure, name and address and then just acknowledge that you've been sworn.
Sure, okay. Good afternoon, my name is Ross Anstetter, I'm with Colliers Engineering and Design. I'm representing, um, BDI Properties for item PC six, and I have been sworn. Um, the property is located on the southwest corner of Wells Road and Curly Road. As Liam said, a special exception was already granted on August eleventh, two thousand and four for a two hundred child daycare facility within the AR zoning district. Um, our request today is to modify this, we're special request to reduce the number of students from two hundred to one sixty and then add the use of vet clinic. Um, no other changes are being made to the site plan, stormwater, anything like that, just the use is going to change. And we agree to all the conditions within the memorandum. Um, we ask you to approve this special exception in accordance with staff's recommendation approval. And I'm here for any questions.
Okay, thank you. All right, is there anybody here to speak on this item?
Steve Stanley, uh, thirty-one, one forty-five, Alliant Drive, Wesley Chapel floor, three, three, five, four, five. I happen to own the property right next door to this. And I really don't want it there because of the trash, the smell, the garbage. I work for veterinarians, I do AC work. Behind the scenes, it's filthy. When you walk in the door, it's fine and dandy. You, that's what you see. But behind the scenes, it's filthy, it's nasty, it stinks. And I don't want that in my backyard. I'm eighty-five feet from that, where you want to put all of this. And I don't want it there, it stinks. I don't want the riffraff that's going to come through there, I want the trash that's going to be coming in on my property, which I've already get enough of that from Wells Road. I don't need to have it from commercial building right in the middle of a residential area. We don't need that there. Go down the roadway ways where all that commercial stuff, Publix and all that is down there. You can put all that there. You don't need to put it in the middle of a residential area. And I don't need a parking lot there. My girlfriend owns the next property over, she don't want it there. She wanted to know if she can write a letter to y'all because she wasn't able to get off on work to get here to do this. But she wants to write a letter stating hers, considering her property is literally right up against it. My property is the L, where the, it comes up, it makes the L, where it's about thirty feet away from where it connects to their property. That's my property, it's the L right there. And then on top of that.
Can we put a map up? Oh, I see.
Sir, while they're putting the map up, so, is it accurate to say that you, your primary concern is the vet clinic, not the daycare center?
Well, the daycare too, because you're going to have a bunch of people dropping off kids at all certain times of the day and, and I got traffic, it's already so bad. You can't even get out on Alliant Road onto a Curly Road because of traffic. And then you're going to put all of this there.
Yeah, just to be clear, the, the daycare center is something that was already approved for this site.
Well, yeah, no one even said anything about that until I found out about all of this.
I, I'm just saying it's, that's an existing approval for the site.
I'm sorry, I'm.
That's an existing approval for this site that was approved in two thousand and four. So, the site is permitted to be a daycare, daycare center today.
Well, I can't help you on the daycare part, but far as the veterinarian part, I don't want it there, it stinks. It's, 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 it's bad. You're going to put all that in my nose, in my yard, and I don't want that there. It's going to be disturbing my peace when these dogs are barking and yelling.
Let me.
I talk loud, I'm hard to hear.
Let me try to help you for a second, I'm going to ask the county attorney.
I can't hardly hear you, sir.
When, when we are asked to consider a special exception, we're given a sheet with six criteria on it of how we evaluate whether or not to approve or deny a request for a special exception. I don't know if somebody from staff or maybe David could explain to the gentleman what those criteria are. I understand you may have an objection, but your objection has to fit into one of these reasons that we are allowed to deny a special exception on. And I don't see that you think it stinks is one of the listed items. But there are other items, there, okay, and that's one of them, if you could talk about something like that.
Sir, 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 please, the microphone so they can catch everything, the clerk has to record everything.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay?
Yes, sir. But I mean, there's, there's other alternatives than just this. And like I said, my girlfriend wants to write a letter to y'all too. She's the one, her property is actually buttoning up to it. And she don't want it either either. She has more stronger feelings about it than I do. So, um, we wanted to know if it was permissible for us to give you a certified, no direct letter or whatever from her? Because she wants to send it and get her opinion in on this.
Yeah, but to address Mr. Moody's point though, I mean, there are some of the criteria that to either directly or indirectly get to what the gentleman is complaining about. I mean, for example, number three talks about the site having suitable access, ingress, ingress, onsite parking, and loading areas, and mentions refuse collection, which he's complained about that. And then, number five, is, deals with or cause other significant problems or unadjoining surrounding properties, which is apparently what he's asserting. So, I mean, I, I mean, I understand he's not pointing to those criteria, but there's a way to take his comments and, and have them apply to those criteria.
And also, sir, I'm, also, I have a medical marijuana license and I grow plants. And you're putting the daycare within the list, the short period of place of, or supposed to have distance.
Well, again, the, the daycare use was approved in two thousand and four, okay? So, they're not here today to ask for the daycare center use.
Okay, I'm just saying, I just, I don't want to go to jail because you built a daycare on top of my marijuana plant.
But sir, I, when did you, I mean, this daycare center has been approved since two thousand and four, when did you place your?
Well, that wouldn't matter because they just legalized where we can get the, the licenses within the last two years.
That approval already existed as the time that you left your marijuana approval.
Well, yeah, that's what I'm saying, it's overlapped, but it's still, the point of it matters, I still live there, I still have the plants, I still have the car. So, whether it was approved or not, I'm still there.
Okay, sir, I, I'm only pointing out that.
Yeah, I'm just saying, I don't want to go to prison because you put a daycare on top of my yard.
It was your decision to get a license for a marijuana facility next to an area that was approved for a daycare. That was your decision, not their decision.
Well, there was nothing saying it was a daycare even coming, when I, when I moved.
Sure, it was approved in two thousand and four.
It's, it's public record that it was approved in two thousand and four.
And there was people living there in two thousand and four, so how did they approve it when there was a residential living there?
The same way they're here asking for approval today for a special exception, they went through the same process.
Approval for a daycare at the, at the.
All right, so, I'm not moving.
Yeah, did, did you have anything else to add, sir?
No, sir, I just, I just wanted to make sure that, and I want to clarify about the letter with my girlfriend. Can she or can she not?
She can send a letter into Development Department.
Well, I mean, but, okay, but this is a special exception approval, you are the final decision-making body. And so, unless that letter is before you today and unless you're willing to, or continue this so you can receive it, this is the fact-finding hearing, so either getting a letter to us after the fact.
Right, after the fact.
It's not going to do any good.
Right, after the fact, okay.
Unless this gets continued for some reason, it won't matter whether the issue sends.
When will this be decided?
Today, unless there's, unless it's continued, it'll be decided today.
All right, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else here to give public comment? Okay, anything from?
We need to get the applicant rebuttal, just so I don't want to forget.
Okay.
Well, um, let me ask staff the question because the applicant may want to rebut. I have a concern with the driveway to Wells Road as shown on the site plan. And David, I realize I have a special exception, these aren't binding, are these binding site plans?
No. They're not binding. I mean, you can impose the conditions, you make it binding, but generally, they're not binding.
And can we impose conditions regarding access?
Yes, I think you would.
So, my question has to do with, it appears we're showing a full access drive to Wells Road, which would require somebody, looks like perhaps the applicant's proposing shortening the left turn lane, because when I look at the aerial photograph, someone who's going westbound on Wells Road and would turn south into this development would have to cross an existing left turn lane to do that. The site plan doesn't depict that, but the aerial photograph appears to. And in this case, even in the site plan, they would be turning left across the taper or the gore area to the left turn lane.
John, would that not come up at the access management analysis as part of the site plan? Or, I don't know.
I assume it would, and that was why I was going to ask the question of staff first. I don't know at what level has the, has transportation looked at this?
Red Tippett is going to speak to that, sir.
Okay.
We have one of our access management reviewers here that's going to speak to this course.
Good afternoon, Stacy Burgess, Transportation Planner with Development Review Services. To my knowledge, when I looked into a seller, I did see a site plan for this, but for a different project. So, under my impression, I'm thinking that this project is in the special exception process, so I haven't seen a site plan for it, for that particular project. I see it here, but I just thought they were coming in for the zoning part of it. So, if I was reviewing this for the site plan part based on the land development code, they would have to have access on a local road based on our land development code. If they got access on the collector, then they would have to come in for access alternative standard, so.
So, okay, okay, so, the only potential concern I have with that comment is that there, clearly they did a substandard roadway analysis and determined that the local road alone, Al- 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 Ian is substandard. And if that was going to be their primary access, I would have think that you all would have required more than just a proportionate share because there's a, there's a finding, number fourteen, that says that they're just going to pay fair share for that road.
That's what I looked up, the person who reviewed this, I was looking up the information and I would assume that because of the trips that will be using that location, they had to use the, um, had to come up with a mitigation versus fixing it based on the requirements.
I understand that, but if, if that was their only access, are you saying that they could, don't have to improve it? I mean, I, I get why you would only make them pay a fair share of their primary access as Wells, but if their primary access was Al- Ian, are you sure that they wouldn't have to make, actually, improve the road?
For this one, looking at the information, it looks like they are using both of the, um, access to one on Wells Road, which is the collector. And based on the trips that they will be using on the, that local roadway, it's because they're producing less than a hundred daily trips. So, because they're producing less than a hundred daily trips on a county-maintained roadway, then the requirement is for them to pay the fair share.
That's kind of my point, is I understand why they would generate less than a hundred daily trips if it's a secondary access.
Okay.
But when you got up here and made it sound like you may not even allow them access on Wells Road, because it's a, it's not a local road, it's a collector road. So, is staff okay with them having access to Wells Road or no?
Well, from my understanding, this may have already taken place. I'm just kind of on the downstream of this project. So, if I was reviewing it for the first time and looking at it, I would ask them to have access on the local roadway. And if it's substandard and they weren't using the collector, then they would probably have, most likely have more than a hundred trips, which would probably make them have to, to improve.
My concern isn't whether or not, and, and I understand the access management rules, that we want to go to local roads first before collectors, and I'm not sure whether I agree or put that. But in this particular case, I feel like a right-in, right-out driveway at Wells Road would be a much safer option than potentially people backing up, attempting to make a left turn across a left turn lane. This site plan does not depict what's on the ground. If you look at the aerial photograph, that left turn lane goes beyond where that driveway is, or at least it doesn't, what is shown in our report. So, I'm thinking that a right-in, right-out driveway at that location is a better option.
Okay.
I don't want to cause a traffic. One of the things on our list to evaluate in a special exception is whether we think it creates a traffic problem. That's the traffic problem I think it creates.
So, yes, this, this body does have the ability, like David was saying, you can, you can impose that, you can make that a right-in, right-out, or you can say no access there at all. And then that would then change the, the, to the south, that we would want them to actually make the improvement in their driveway over to the road.
I would, I would tell you, personally speaking, if it's going to be a daycare center, probably. probably multiple access points might be appropriate, but I don't want to have a dangerous access point.
Understood. And you know, this, the vision roads, the, the the Curly Road is actually going to be having a little bit of some change in the traffic flow there with, with the new vision alignment, so we need to take a lot of different things, and it has a lot of moving parts on it, so it kind of depends on the timing as to that level of danger and kind of how it plays out. But we can certainly work with them in the site plan with whatever you guys decide.
And this will still have to come in for a site plan, at which point in time it will undergo access management analysis?
Correct.
Sir, we need you, if you're going to speak, you ought to speak from up here. Sorry about that.
Sorry, Ross Einstein, Colliers Engineering and Design. We, I'm pretty sure the site plan is already, almost already through, which means the access management and the TIS has already been approved, because I can't submit this application until both of those have been approved.
Okay, sir, there's a finding of fact, number thirteen, hopefully you read the agenda memo. It says, access management analysis shall be performed at the time of preliminary site plan or preliminary development plan. So that leads me to believe they have not done access management analysis. You may have done a timing and phasing traffic analysis. Or, or staff determined that it was exempt from that.
Okay.
But this finding thirteen says that access management is going to be looked at at the time of site plan.
Okay, site plan is in, and it has been in for a while.
Oh, you submitted a site plan before you even had a special exception approval?
Correct.
Okay. And has it gone through access management review?
And if it's part of the site plan process, yes, they've seen it.
And.
Do we have comments back here?
Yeah, we're, I'm pretty sure I have like a, almost approval letter. Like it's a, I got a.
With a full access on Wells Road? I mean, is this the site plan?
Yeah, this is the same site plan that's gone through site plan.
Well, okay, just to be clear, that was his risk that he assumed.
Yeah, I know, I know.
I mean, if you, if you, this body says that you don't want him to have a full access on Wells Road, it doesn't matter whether he submitted something already. I mean, that's I agree with Brad. If you want to condition this on a being a right-in, right-out, you have that power to do regardless of what he's already submitted.
I wish our traffic consultant was here, because she did a whole traffic study and I'm pretty sure worked with the county to figure out that a right-in, right-out would work best for Wells, so that's why we did the right-in, right-out.
But that's not what's shown?
Yeah, yeah, it's just shown, right, you take a right into the.
What stops somebody from making a left from westbound Wells Road to southbound?
The rules of the road, technically. I mean, I know, I know, I know, but I'm.
I watch people run red lights and stop signs all day long.
Exactly, but you know, we can only do as, you know, as much as we can.
Well, you could put a pork chop in that driveway and stop somebody from turning left.
I mean, that wasn't brought to our attention at the time, so I mean, we can look at it, but the traffic study and the county suggested a right-in and right-out, which is what we did.
If that's a concern, Mr. Me, you could make that a condition of approval if they install a pork chop.
Well, I'm, I'm confused, because the way this whole memo's written, I mean, if, it doesn't really give any indication that there's a site plan approval done. I mean, there's rough proportionality for right-of-way preservation? Has that been completed?
Say it one more time?
I mean.
So, so there is a, there is a finding that it says at the time of site plan, they might have to dedicate additional right-of-way for Curly and Wells. I suspect that was not made a condition of approval because there was no rough proportionality done in connection with the special exception, but presumably there would be in connection with the site plan approval. So was that done?
So what's, what's being discussed here, there was an approval for the previously allowed use on the site. So that's the one that the site plan that was in. So this one brings different uses to the site, so there has not been that evaluation as part of the site plan, per se.
Okay, so they don't have a site plan in for a veterinary office and school?
Correct.
Okay, well, that would probably affect rough proportionality on right-of-way dedication. Sir, I mean, can you clarify? Because we're hearing two different things here.
Yeah, I am honestly filling in. My boss is on a plane flying back, so I'm, I'm trying to do the best I can. I believe they are correct where the use for the vet is not technically allowed yet because of the special exception. So if you were to approve that, then that would change the use of that one building, and if not, that would be both childcare.
But that also could affect the access management analysis too.
Right, but the, the childcare is more intense than the vet clinic. So it would be less intense with the vet.
Okay, well, it's definitely going to affect right-of-way dedication. So did you know if your client preserved the right-of-way that's contemplated by finding sixteen, which is forty feet from Wells and seventy-three feet from Curly?
I believe that's, I believe so.
Well, I, I mean, I, I find it hard to believe that there's an additional thirty-five feet there that you're not going to need for your use on the Curly roadside.
Yeah.
Where are you going to put your pond? Or maybe even your playground?
I mean, yeah. Yeah, I know, I see what you're saying. But I mean, the, the measurement right there from center of road to the property line is thirty-seven feet.
And there's seventy-three feet, I believe, required. Possibly.
Seventy-three feet from center line, if it was roughly proportional, but I, from what Brad's telling me, we didn't do a rough proportionality analysis because we didn't even have the full uses. Is that right, Brad? The, the site plan that we're reviewing doesn't have a vet off, office on it? Sir, I, I mean, I don't want to be rude, but that's, what you got up and said was a little bit of a misrepresentation. I mean, you made it sound like you had a site plan, that this site plan was about to be approved by our staff.
With it being a daycare, yes, it.
Okay, well, that's a little bit of a big omission. You understand that, right? To say, oh, I was going to get a site plan approved, but it doesn't have the vet office, which is the very thing that we're seeking, you're seeking approval for today.
Right, but it's.
You understand how that's a little misleading to the planning commission?
I can see that, yes. But the vet clinic is less intense than the childcare, so it, it would be anything, it would be less traffic, it would be less activity.
Okay, but it definitely affects rough proportionality and right-of-way dedication requirements.
Okay.
What do you think about a continuance? Then you can get your expert here.
Then my boss can come and answer all the, I'm, I'm, again, I'm doing the best that I can, and I'm sorry for misrepresenting.
Well, the other advantage of a continuance is that maybe you can meet with your neighbor and have a discussion about his concerns, and maybe there's some additional buffering you can put in, maybe there's some conditions you can commit to in terms of how you're going to treat your waste, so you, there's no smells protruding to the adjacent property. I mean, there might be things that you can agree to with your neighbor, so that you don't have somebody here objecting.
Okay.
So maybe that would be a good chance for you to have that meeting with your neighbor.
Okay. Then we can, can we continue to the next meeting?
Yeah, well, well, is there anything, is there anybody else?
Yeah, one other comment on this, is it looks like that there's sliver of property that that access to, from Wells, it's actually Pasco County owned property up on the north end there, that the, the Wells Road access ingress and egress extends through.
Oh.
Is that, is there an access agreement through that, or is it?
Well, I mean, if it's county right-of-way, they have the right to.
Well, is it right-of-way or is it a parcel, I think?
It's, it looks like a parcel. It's owned by Pasco County Facilities.
Well, but, okay, but all, all property owned by the county is in the name of Pasco County Facilities, so it could be for right-of-way, so I don't know the purpose of it, maybe Brad or somebody in his team know, but if it is right-of-way, they in theory could put their driveway in our right-of-ways, I mean, they get a right-of-way use permit. I, I just don't know the purpose of it, so maybe Brad knows.
Yeah, it appears to be a sliver of additional right-of-way that was obtained by the county. We have that corner piece.
Yeah.
So they would be allowed to connect to there.
And.
Looked like it was done to accommodate the turn lanes at Wells.
And presumably, they may be dedicating an additional right-of-way. Maybe, I don't know if that's occurred or not.
So the, the site plan shows one foot of additional right-of-way on Curly because of the realignment of Curly through here going down, I forget the name of the new road. But it's going to realign some of that traffic to the major roads, so this piece would, I believe, be eighty feet, which would be forty feet from center line, so they were creating that forty feet from center line through this approval that they have now.
Okay, so are you telling me that they only need to dedicate forty feet from center, center line?
That's my understanding, based on the document.
Okay, well, then your agenda memo probably needs to be fixed. I, I.
Okay.
I'm just saying, we shouldn't be telling the planning commission it's seventy-three feet if it's really forty.
We will look into that and take care of that.
Okay.
I think also, there's a, is there a contradiction in because of the conditions thirteen and fourteen, we're basing the exemption from timing and phasing on fifty, less than fifty peak hour trips? And the required mitigation in fourteen is based on more than a hundred daily trips?
Peak, the difference is daily versus peak hour.
Perfect, okay. Thank you.
Okay, anything else from up here?
I was just looking at that extension too. I guess it's going to go further, to, straight off to the east. And if, if that road doesn't get built, I would like to have it more, it would be instead of a May, it should be a Shaw, because that three-lane road is it's been there forever. It probably needs to be accommodated as a larger road. So just as far as, speak to that maybe at the next meeting, the, for condition sixteen, instead of a May, a Shaw?
Well, keep in mind, that's a finding of fact.
Yeah, okay.
You're talking about for the, for which road?
Curly. It says May, May set aside.
Well, the reason it says May is because usually at the time of special exception, staff has not done the rough proportionality analysis to show that it can be required. The wrinkle here is that it's all news to everybody up here that the data apparently already submitted a site plan where we would normally do those things.
Okay.
Then the wrinkle to the wrinkles, apparently the site plan doesn't even include the vet office, so these are all reasons that probably should be continued so this can be figured out.
Yeah.
I would recommend you continue this. There's a lot of issues.
Is there a motion?
Move to continue.
Chairman, if I may, I just want to provide you the next dates.
Okay.
So the next date, city date is January ninth, and then a sixty-day continuance would be February sixth in Date City, one thirty P M.
Thirty days would be sufficient?
Do you feel like thirty days would be sufficient? Get everything answered?
So will we continue to January ninth, be here in Date City?
I'll second that.
All right, motion in a second to continue this to January ninth in Date City. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed, motion carries.
Liam Devine, Planning Development Economic Growth Department, P C seven. I will wait for the PowerPoint. P D E twenty-five dash seven seven eight five, in the name of New York Avenue Business Park LLC, Diagonal Road Business Park. It is a Euclidean zoning amendment from R two low-density residential district and C two general commercial district to I one light industrial park district. The future land use classification as of Tuesday, December tenth, was approved for I L, light industrial. The applicant proposes to develop the property in conformance with the I one light industrial park district standards. It's located on the southeast corner of the intersection of Diagonal Road and New York Avenue. It's located in the West Market area and urban service area. Here's our context map. Here is our zoomed-in aerial. The surrounding future land use to the north is I L, to the east is R O R, to the south is Res six, and to the west is R O R. The surrounding zoning, to the north is A R, to the east is C two, to the south is R two, and to the west is C two, R M H, and R two. The subject site currently consists of tractor-trailers parking and approximately sixteen point eight four acres. Access to the property is from New York Avenue, and this does have a voluntary deed restriction addressing live local concerns. And this is coming with a recommendation for approval from, recommendation for approval from Planning Development Economic Growth Department.
Okay. Is the applicant present?
Good afternoon, Barbara Willhite, sixty-three twenty-seven Graham Boulevard, Newport Richie. I would just wanted to highlight that yesterday, the, excuse me, on Tuesday, the Board of County Commissioners changed the land use to industrial light. So the land use on this is industrial light. This is the companion zoning to I one. Not sure what the issue could be, but I'm here to find out as well. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Barbara. Is there anybody here to speak on this?
Pastor Jen, Shady Hills, Mission Chapel one five nine two five, Green Glen Lane, Spring Hill, Florida. The only concern that I really had about this, and had I seen Ms. Willhite, yes, I would have spoke to her about it. It just was concerning that it was Tuesday, it went before the board, and it wasn't advertised for today, and to be honest, I was just here for another meeting. And so if somebody did have an issue or did want to speak to it, it would come before you and they didn't have the opportunity potentially, and it wasn't, I know that the November was rescheduled, but then Tuesday it was there and nothing was really brought up, so in all honesty, it was a little confusing, and I think it would be, not for nothing, a great opportunity if the county would work with this property owner for housing, for transitional living. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Well, you need to look.
Can I ask her a question?
Barbara, you don't, you're good?
I just want to ask her a question.
Barbara or pastor?
Pastor Jen. You made the suggestion that the county would should work with the applicant for transitional housing. Why would this site be optimal for transitional housing versus some other site?
This site actually would be very optimal because of the location. There's hotspots where one of the highest, I think, top three probably for overdose fatalities in the state of Florida. And this location, I, you know, as I advocate for this type of project, this type of thing, what continues to come around to me is that there is no property in the area close to these hotspots. You know, and there are people dying in this area. At the board meeting, some lady was talking about shooting the homeless people, I think.
I heard her.
So, you know, when I saw this, I thought potentially it would be an opportunity for the landowner to work together with the county to do something in that arena.
Barbara Willhite, wouldn't it make more sense to look for property that's for sale than to come up here and try to stop our, or comment on our rezoning? Look for properties for sale, approach the county, and put something together, but to pick off a, agenda, an item that somebody's bringing forward for their property makes no sense to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else from up here? If nothing else, to have a motion?
I'm sorry, the.
P C seven?
P C seven.
Yeah.
Move to approve item P C seven.
I'll second.
Motion in a second to approve P C seven. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Are we moving to P C eleven now?
Yeah, P C eleven.
We approved eight, nine, and ten.
Yep, P C eleven.
Good afternoon, Ebro Stevens, Planning Development Economic Growth Department, presenting P D E two-five zero zero six one, a comprehensive plan amendment in the name of C P A twenty-four oh six, Wells, wellfields, and wellhead protection areas. This is a staff-initiated comprehensive plan map amendment. Updating map two dash one, Wells, wellfields, and wellhead protection areas to include Hudson Water Works. Updating map two-dash-one, wells, wellfields, and wellhead protection areas to include Hudson Water Works. During the process, the city of San Antonio did approach us to include a couple of their wells. All, the wells are located south of New York Avenue, the southeast corner of the intersection of Bolton Avenue and Little Road, as well as south of Darby Road in the city of San Antonio. This is the location map. We are in the west as well as the north market areas. And here's a visual specifically where the well is located. The Hudson Water Works wells will have, this is the map showing the wells specifically with a two-hundred-foot buffer. And then this is the city of San Antonio wells with the five-hundred-foot fixed radius. This is updated version of map two-dash-one, wells, wellfields, and wellhead protection areas to include those maps I had mentioned.
And we previously received and filed the updated maps, which are the ones in the agenda package online, correct?
That is correct, yes, sir.
So just to sum it up, these are wells that aren't mapped under the county's current wellhead protection regulations. They were, they're wells that we basically missed originally, and we're adding them.
That is correct, yes.
Okay.
The proposed amendment is consistent with the following comprehensive plan policies. Policy Con one-six-six, establishment of wellhead protection areas. Policy Con one-six-seven, the groundwater protection ordinance and creation. And with that, staff recommend the local planning agency find the proposed amendments consistent with the comprehensive plan. I will be happy to answer any questions.
I don't think this item was pulled by the planning commission.
No.
There was a.
There was somebody in the focus. Okay.
I do have one question.
Richard, go ahead.
Yeah, just curious. Are there any other independent utilities out there that we don't have mapped on there, and is there a plan to get them on the map?
I would like to bring in our facilities to answer those questions.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Aubelle Rivero. I'm a project manager for Pasco County Utilities. So we are currently working on doing a comprehensive study to update this comprehensive plan map. And we will include all the things that we need to include at that point. Does that answer your question, or did you?
I, well, I guess I just wanted to know if there were other utilities out there that are not on the map, and are you gonna make an attempt, I guess, to put them on there?
At this point, this is what we have, and we are, as I say, we're going to perform a study to see if we missed anything else.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I don't know if this is one you can answer. On the, on the map of the proposed San Antonio wells, we're showing a five-hundred-foot radius. On the proposed wells, there's two existing wells shown here without a radius. Do they need to have a radius on that map?
Could you repeat the question?
On the, on the map we were provided for the new San Antonio wells, there's five-hundred-foot radius is shown on the proposed two wells.
That is correct.
There are two existing wells on the bottom end of that map without a radius shown.
Who's looking into that? Are they pulling the map up? Is that what you're doing?
That's the Hudson one.
Yeah, it's gonna be, it's the last map in the package. It doesn't, yeah, I mean, I'm with Matt. Doesn't look like there's any radius is shown on those existing wells, just on the proposed ones.
Well, while staff looks into that, can we hear from the public, and then maybe they can come up with an answer while the public's speaking?
Kristi Zimmer, address on file. I am not opposed to protecting any wellfield area that's critical and paramount to all of us. However, what I am subject to complain about is we are given only the information that is on your website for these meetings, to be able to access the maps, to be able to access the information, what these issues are about. Where I have a problem is when people come in and show, present to you guys at the last minute, different information that we're not given, and I'm not okay with that. The people that come in here at the last minute and ask for a continuance, aren't there rules that you have to give certain amount of notice for these continuations? People leave their jobs all day to be here to talk about these issues that are concerning to them. But I have a problem when they just pop in extra maps and extra information that we don't get access to, and that's where I have a problem. Please protect our wellfields.
Thank you, Kristi. And I agree, and I think, I mean, recall, this is, this came up because it was an item where this wellfields, these wellfields weren't mapped, and then there were no maps. So this is being made part of the map so we can do precisely that, so, thank you.
Good afternoon. Amy Toll with Planning Development Economic Growth. So this is the map that I think you're referencing. This is just a location map. The intent of this map was to highlight the five-hundred fixed radius. We're not removing, those two wells are existing on the overall map. It is on that map. This is just the location map, so we'll fix that for B C C, make sure that it's, it's shown there accurately. And then Jamie, yes, that was correct. So the intent of this amendment was actually brought to us approximately a year ago or so with a project that was over on the west side, so Hudson Water Works. They did have mapped wells, but we did not have them on our map. We did hire a consultant to evaluate the actual five-year and ten-year wellhead paths for that area. They've concluded their results. This is the result of those changes.
So Amy, can you make sure that the updated maps that were handed out to the planning commission today, that before this goes to the board, those are put online so that the public has an opportunity to see the updated maps?
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. Anything else from the public? Anybody else here to speak on this item?
I'll just say, I was pleased, actually, I had read the wellhead study in association with a prior rezoning a couple of months ago. So I got an advanced peek at this, and my conclusion, and actually consultant states it, and I agree with it, they did a much more conservative analysis than would have been required by just our comprehensive plan. So we're actually protecting more than what we, our plan might require to do. Good.
Very good. All right, nothing else? They need a motion?
I'll move to approve. Second.
Motion to approve.
With the amended maps.
With the amended maps, correct?
Okay.
Motion to approve in a second with the amended maps. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right, everybody good? Need a break? Push through. All right, let's go to P C twelve.
All right, Amy Toll, Planning Development Economic Growth. The item before you is P D E twenty-five dash zero-zero-six-two. It is a comprehensive plan map amendment to, or, oh, I'm sorry. I thought we were doing this one first. My fault. One more. Sorry about that. I thought we were doing rural areas first. Okay, so this is actually the P D E twenty-five dash zero-zero-six-two. It is a comprehensive plan text amendment in the name of C P A twenty-four dash eleven, A D U text amendment. So again, this is a text amendment to the comprehensive plan. We are proposing a text amendment to chapter two, appendix, section flu A six, chapter six, and the glossary to add provisions that allow for accessory dwelling units within the comprehensive plan. Again, proposes are changed to chapter two and chapter six, the glossary. Here's a visual representation of what's being proposed in the ordinance. Essentially, we're adding the red underlined language within section flu A six, which allows for accessory dwelling units to be permitted, but they will not be counted towards density, so that's the intent of that language. Additionally, in all of the applicable future land use classifications, we've added accessory dwelling units may be considered. So it opens that door up to enable accessory dwelling units within any future land use classification that allows for single-family detached units.
So Amy, just a question. Is the details under, the detailed circumstances under which we would allow these will be in Land Development Code?
Correct. So the intent of this is to act as a companion with a L D C A that will be presented to you in January. We are also updating policy H S G two-point-one-point-five accessory units. Previously, it stated Pasco County shall explore new alternatives to create affordable housing opportunities such as accessory units in residential zoning districts and within mixed-use projects. We are proposing the language to now read, "In order to create additional and affordable rental living opportunities and to provide greater flexibility for homeowners, accessory dwelling units shall be permitted in flu categories that allow single-family residential development, subject to regulations designed to limit impacts and protect neighborhood character." Additionally, in your packet, we currently have the proposed definition in the comprehensive plan glossary. However, after further discussion, there was some clarification that needed to be presented with respect to quote-unquote independent units. So this is the alternative that we would like to propose instead. We are updating or kind of further clarifying the glossary intent to read dwelling units are not the primary dwelling unit, but are contained within, attached to, and/or detached from a single-family dwelling in the same zoning lot. Again, A D U's will also be further defined in the proposed L D C A that will be coming to you in the new year.
Amy, just one question. When you refer to the same zoning lot, I'm assuming that means it can't be, the accessory dwelling unit cannot be subdivided from the primary dwelling unit?
I believe that is the intent, yes.
Amy, I have some questions.
Okay.
So, when I read the proposed amendment to each of the flu categories that allows for single-family development, it says accessory dwelling units may be considered.
Correct.
But when I get down here to the housing element, I'm sorry, because I'm scrolling down here. Can you put that back up? This says they shall be permitted in flu categories that allows, there's a big difference in my mind between may be considered and shall be permitted.
That's, that's a fair point. I think, so in the intent of the policy, we are ensuring that it is permitted, but we, we could align it with may. May might make a little bit more sense here.
Our next, the next case coming up is where we have a conundrum in the comp plan, too, and this appears to create one.
Right. Yes, the intent is to allow for A D U's to occur in the future land use classifications. It's not a requirement.
Well, I, so.
What I'm saying is this one would infer that it is a requirement.
So I think, I think it's a simple solution. If you change the shall to may, it probably solves the problem. Unless Terry, you?
Yeah, McTarris Brooks, Planning Development Economic Growth. The flu category is broader than the policy, so if, if a development comes in and decides under that flu to put in A D U's, okay, they made this decision, the A D U therefore shall be permitted, permitted.
Terry, I still think may would be better. I mean, because my understanding, I don't, I've not been involved in the details of these regulations, but I heard there was some possibility that some of them might be special exception uses in certain circumstances, and so that's more of a discretionary approval, so probably shouldn't say shall.
If.
If the, or if the board decide to make them special exception uses in certain areas, so. So, I think, and to be consistent with the other language, I think it would just be better to change shall to may. I don't think it hurts you in any way. You're still saying that they're, they're allowed in all, in all single-family residential development.
It can be allowed.
It can be allowed, but shall is kind of a strong word. I mean, it makes it sound like you have, there's never going to be any discretion, and I just think, I think Mr. Mooney raises a good point, that it sounds more discretionary in the other policies, and it's probably better just to change your shall to may here.
The other question, and I don't know, maybe, well, I should be asking Amy or Terry both of you. The idea that accessory dwelling units will not count towards the density, what's the rationale for that? Let me elaborate further. The reason we make evaluations and limitations on density is because density has effects. Density increases traffic. Density increases demand on the potable water system, creates more wastewater, requires other additional, for instance, we had the sheriff in here during the last meeting who says for every four-hundred new dwellers, he needs another two deputies. So there are demands of our infrastructure that are created by the addition of dwelling units. And I'll give you an example. So, a sewage pumping station in a subdivision, that's designed to accommodate the number of houses that are designed in that subdivision. So let's say I go into Gulf Harbors. This is one built, what, sixties and seventies? The sewage pumping stations in Gulf Harbors were designed to accommodate the number of lots in Gulf Harbors. Now all of a sudden, forty or fifty percent of the people in Gulf Harbors decide to close in their garage or build on an accessory dwelling unit, and I have all that additional sewage flow going to pump stations which weren't designed to accommodate it. I have additional impervious surfaces creating stormwater runoff, running into infrastructure that was never designed to handle that. So I'm not sure that not counting it towards the density makes much.
So I may be able to help stuff on this one. I think part of the problem is that there, and there's, I think staff was intentional the way they wrote this. This is subject to regulations designed to limit impacts. Okay, so what you're talking about are impacts, and my understanding is these A D U's are still gonna pay all applicable impact fees, all right? And, and the Land Development Code will have criteria where you could address those impacts. The problem with you saying it affects density is you might force somebody to have to do a comprehensive plan amendment just to get an A D U. And we actually had a case recently where somebody actually had to change the entire boundaries of the rural char, the rural protection area and add a unit, just add a single unit. I mean, so, part of the reason, we talk about affordable housing, part of the reason we have affordable housing issues, all the process you have to go through to get an additional unit. So, I think staff is sensitive to your concerns about impact, which is why this language says we're gonna create criteria in Land Development Code to address those impacts, but I don't think we want to force Mrs. Smith to go, have to go get a comp plan amendment.
I would agree with you. I don't want to force Mrs. Smith to get a comp plan amendment. But if I'm buying a five-hundred-acre tract with a Res nine, a Res twelve land use, all of a sudden, I can put two residential units on each lot. Actually, I don't see any limitation here. There could be three, or there's no limitation on the number of accessory dwelling units on a lot in this plan, so all of a sudden, Res nine is actually Res eighteen.
Well, I mean.
Or Res twenty-four is Res forty-eight. Well, I'm sorry, Res twenty-four probably doesn't allow for the single family, but, but the Res nine or Res six becomes Res twelve by default.
Well, but I think you have the Land Development Code that's coming along, that staff, you could put a Land Development requirement, there wouldn't be more than one additional accessory unit for each lot. And so, the land, you can use the Land Development Code to protect these concerns that you're raising. If you don't do something in the comp plan, though, in theory, that one unit they're adding could put them from Res three to Res four, and now you're making somebody have to go amend the comp plan to get Res six to add a. to get rez six to add a single accessory dwelling unit. I mean, I, I understand your concern, but I'm not sure why it can't be addressed in the Land Development Code.
And we're currently working on the Land Development Code to, to back this or to implement these changes in the conference.
And I don't want you to take my questions wrong. I will tell you that in general, I support the idea of allowing accessible dwelling units, "Subject to regulations designed to limit impacts and protect neighborhood character." There are a lot of people who need to, because of the cost of housing, there are a lot of people who need to house their college-age kid. They need to bring in their elderly parents. I will tell you that in my own neighborhood, 90% of the properties surrounding mine have illegal ADUs that consist of everything from a pre-made shed that you can buy on the side of the road with a window air conditioning unit put into it, to RVs and campers, old mobile homes that just show up. I've even seen people buy RVs and campers and then build structures around them. And I'm amazed that, I'm amazed that a code enforcement officer can drive by that every day and not see it, because he can clearly see it from the road. But, so I understand that there's some need for this. I am, I have some concern that we could create density in places we don't necessarily want to create density. But I, I hear David. It would, I, to me, it would be helpful if we had the proposed Land Development Code amendments to go along with consideration of comp plan amendment. But in general, I'm not opposed to the idea of ADU.
And my recommendation would be if there are areas of the county where we think we should have heightened sensitivity to ADUs, it may be a situation where you say, "In those circumstances, it requires a special exception approval," or it has to come through some public process. Now, you've got to be careful with that, because even that's a cumbersome process for a lot of people. But if it's really a scenario where you think this needs heightened protection, we can say, "In that circumstance, it needs some special exception or conditional use."
Like I said, I'd feel more comfortable seeing it with a companion Land Development Code amendment. Just offhand, one of my own concerns is, for instance, we have a primary unit on lot, and then we have accessory structures on lots. Generally, we think of those as sheds, pool decks, pool cages, as an accessory dwelling unit that's detached, an accessory structure. In other words, can my neighbor now build an accessory dwelling unit five feet from my property lot when his setbacks would otherwise be 50 feet in my neighborhood?
So, so those are all things that will be addressed in the Land Development Code?
Right. I mean, I think that's valid points, and I know staff knows, but John won't forget.
I, I do think that staff, really, all they're trying to do with this is make sure that-
Oh, I understand what you're trying to pave the way. I said I would feel more comfortable, and I didn't say I'm going to vote against this today by any means. I'm asking some questions. And I, I'm hoping to hear from the colleagues up here how they feel about this, too. Just, that was some thoughts on density. I don't think that additional density comes without impacts. And I don't want to rush into something and have a bunch of unintended consequences for something that I actually think is potentially a good idea. Anyways, you've answered the questions. Thank you.
Anything else from up here?
We, excuse me, Mr. Chair, we do have public comment.
Okay.
We do have people registered.
Okay. Now I'll take public comment.
So the first one that I have on the list is Nancy Hazelwood.
Nancy Hazelwood, 340110, "A nice place." I'm on record, too. All right, so I'm, I've been reading through this Planning Commission agenda memo. My first question is, "How's this play out in the Northeast rural area?" And so one of the things I'm reading are benefits. They offer flexible living solutions, help maximize property use, and can be a source of rental income for homeowners. Well, I can just see somebody wanting to put up more than one on their property, especially if they've got like a ranch, three or four, you know? How's that going to work? It says on, after that, it says encourage infill development. Well, so you've got a green space. Are you going to infill it with these? Now, I like them, but I would like to see one on one acre. Something that lets the land out, especially in the Northeast rural. Maybe you can make it like that in the Northeast rural area plan. Also, Policy 1010.3, "Residential compatibility transition." "Encouraging clustering is appropriate to limit impacts of residential development on adjacent agricultural open space." It says that it would not hurt that area. I don't think it's going to protect it in any way. This just looks like another way to add, add things to the rural area instead of leaving the open space. So I'm not liking that either. And then underneath that, the proposed amendment to allow accessory dwellings, this is supported by Policy 1.10.3. I don't see how this will not have a adverse effect. Mr. Moody, you were starting to say something about what could happen with the densities and everything. And also that it would have an effect. You'll need more, there'll be more traffic. And so that will encourage more amenities. These people are going to need Publix, a dry cleaner, filling stations, along with the utilities you were talking about. So I, I would like to see a lot more on this. Especially, I'd like to see how it's going to fit into the Northeast rural protected area. I think it's kind of scary the way it's written up. Thank you all.
Thank you, Nancy.
The next one I have on the list is Kim Briarly.
Kim Briarly, 8946 Olapasco Road, on record. I'm confused as to how an additional dwelling won't impact the density. It's a dwelling. It'll have density. I'm also confused about, a lot of these places don't have parking already. People get tickets for parking on the street in their own neighborhood. That's going to add to all of that. And as much as I think it might be a great idea to put your mother-in-law in the shed, mine lives with me, and I, I get it. I just see it as a source for, it's true. I see it as a source for Airbnbs, which a lot of people are against. I see people's yards ending up looking like a campsite and it just looking very transient. And are these being permitted? Or are they just having them dropped off by sheds to go? And then they run some janky electric, and then before you know it, there's a big old fire in the neighborhood. And I just, I don't think we have enough information on it to do that. But I do think that it's going to affect the density, because it, it has to. There's going to be people there, additional people. So.
So I wanted to address that comment a little bit about, because Mr. Moody raised a good point, which is that some of this is occurring already, probably illegally. And part of the reason it's occurring illegally is because we don't have zoning regulations that allow for it. And so if we actually adopt zoning regulations that allow for it, it will have to go through a normal permitting process, comply with the Order of Building Code. And there'll be a process for these folks to add a properly permitted accessory dwelling unit. If it's not permitted, they're just doing it anyway illegally, and then it becomes an enforcement issue for the county. And do we want to kick somebody out of their shed or whatever they're living? I mean, so you raise some very valid points, but I think part of the reason we have these unpermitted sheds where people are living is because we're not allowing it currently.
I see it for an opportunity for it to be taken advantage of. So that's where I'm looking at with the density and parking.
Well, I think staff, that's their job as part of the Land Development Code to make sure that those regulations don't impact the character of the neighborhood and whatever that policy says that we talked about earlier.
Yeah, those policies provide a pretty strict rulebook for them. So they have their hands full, and they're taking notes rigorously.
Yeah, they're pretty busy.
Mr. Dutter, right behind you, is taking the lead on this, right, Pastor? You're going to address all these concerns in the Land Development Code?
I don't present any last things.
Thank you.
So the next one we have on our list is Kristy Zimmer.
Kristy Zimmer, address on record. Correct me if I'm wrong, David. Didn't we already go through a granny shed ordinance many years ago?
No.
Yes.
The only, the only place, there have been a few MPUDs that have allowed for accessory dwelling units. But I do not believe we have any regulations that would allow some, and just county-wide regulations, that would allow for these type of units.
Many years ago, this was brought up, and it was called the granny shed. And there was an ordinance involved. And I want to say it was in the mid-'90s. And the restrictions were very clear. And I'm looking at this, and, and again, I'm not against or opposed to an in-law quarters or, you know, a dwelling of some sort, small, for your college kids or your parents or whatever, along those lines. But I think that before you approve any of this, the Land Development Code needs to be put into place as to what you're actually approving. And I think we're kind of maybe putting the cart before the horse, because I'm looking at this, and ranging from 200 to 1,200 square feet of living space, that's a dwell, that's a house. That's a three-bedroom, two-bath house in Lake Padgett South. My concern is, I'm from Lake Padgett Estates. We have no HOA. We have no rules. We're bound by the county. We're third to half-acre lots mostly. We already have people who have built detached garages with apartments on top that are looking down into people's yards. They're housing people. They're using them for Airbnbs. Yes, they're illegal. I don't want the whole neighborhood to turn into this. And I remember that that other issue, when we were talking about it, there was no income allowed on these dwellings, that it had to be a relative or extended family, that it couldn't be just open to the public and rent to anybody. But if you have a question of what this will turn out to look like, go drive through Town and Country and see what all those dwelling, all the extra dwellings on their property and the impact of the density is. We're not, you're approving these projects with X number homes, X number amount of traffic. But if you approve this, you've just doubled everything. And you need to put teeth in it that says one per property. Don't allow them to put three, four, five, six, 10 on the property. That's not going to be okay. And I think with some of those protections that are put in place ahead of time so the people know, it probably wouldn't go against the grain so much. But right now, this is like an open-ended situation. And the single dwelling unit then becomes a multifamily unit. So as a realtor, how do I market that? Oh, I've got a single dwelling unit, but you can rent this other property out in the back. That becomes a multifamily dwelling unit, not single family. I think there's a lot of issues on here. I don't see how it's going to fix, fix the affordable housing issue by no means, unless we all take in a homeless person off the street to put in there. And they're not going to be able to afford to pay any rent. But I think you need to put some more teeth into this before you approve it. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristy.
The last one that I have on my list is Mike Polterek.
I believe that we should support intergenerational housing, point-blank. We have to take care of our families. Not everybody can afford to put family members into assisted living. We also need to take care of our children. The rural district has its argument about what Ms. Hazelwood and Ms. Zimmer, Ms. Zimmer are talking about. She kind of stole my thunder, because as a realtor, I'd love to take you to some listings in Town and Country Hillsborough. All right? I know that area very, very well. And this scares me, because this sounds unregulated and a loophole for it to be exploited. And I'm going to give you an example. I've been through plenty of properties there where the garage, a two-bedroom home, the garage is turned into one apartment, whether or not it has a kitchenette. The home is its own unit. The covered patio becomes a third unit. And then a shed in the back becomes a fourth. That is a density issue. That is, that is an impact issue. And this really scares me when we talk about for revenue purposes. The reason is, we are all expecting the best of people. We are expecting the best of, "I need help paying my bills, and so this way I can convert my garage, turn it into a secondary income stream to help me make my mortgage payment." That's fantastic. There's individuals out there that are going to invest in properties. And as the property owner, they're going to put the ADUs in. They're going to do the conversion. And then they're going to turn around, and they're going to rent out all four units. And I fear for places like Port Ritchie, Newport Ritchie, and Hudson, where one driveway is going to turn into cars parked across the, the entire front yard, four different, what's going to become transient housing situations, being allowed, unregulated. And I'm very sensitive to transitional housing. Pastor, I'd love to talk to you about East County, because we need to do some things out there as well, especially for the homeless. Okay? But this seems to me like it's going to be an unregulated loophole that can be exploited by any slumlord out there. And it could potentially destroy traditional neighborhoods, specifically in West County, that the current parents and grandparents live out there. They've lived there for 40 or 50 years. Is it fair to them for the next-door neighbor to now have four potential, non-related, rent-paying parties living next door to your grandma and grandpa? That's not fair. And the impact portion, which has a significant, a significant portion on this is our schools and capacity. And if we're not going to include these ADUs with any form of impact occurring in the neighborhoods, we have a problem. What I would like to recommend is you need some of us from the actual population to come together, potentially as a citizen advisory committee, to help you figure out a streamlined way. Maybe this needs to be special exemption. But this cannot be exploited as a loophole for individuals to profiteer off of good intentions. Thank you.
Michael, a couple of things for, for all of you that were here today. First off, this is a comp plan amendment. This isn't the Land Development Code.
Yes, sir.
Okay, there, there's further work to be done on this. If, if this passes here today, it then goes to the board, which I, I recommend you all go to the board to voice your same thoughts. But keep in mind, this does come back as the Land Development Code amendment that they mentioned still has to come back. It's going to have all the teeth and all the, the requirements that, that you guys have all brought up. So just wanted to make sure.
But to his point, and it was the point I was trying to make, there's still this issue of whether or not we're counting it as density. And I understand the outside case that David brings up. But I'm looking at, and I'm not looking at an existing neighborhood as counting the density. I'm looking at the future neighborhood. Hey, look, I just got this property. I hired Barbara Willhide over there. She changed the density from rez three to rez nine. And now I can have accessory dwelling units, and it's really rez 18. Or more, because we don't actually know how many ADUs. If, that's assuming only one ADU is allowed on each of those lots.
Well, that, all that goes back to the development of, of the teeth in the Land Development Code.
So I will tell you on that point, and some of these have actually come to the Planning Commission, every single MPUD that we've approved that has allowed accessory dwelling units has said they do not count towards their density.
I, and-
And you all have approved some of these. I want to be clear about that.
I'm not going to say we're not, and I actually didn't get into this. But I was actually going to ask about, there was an amendment to the Gateway Hub proposed in here. Is that a new entitlement for ADUs? Or is that one- proposed in here, is that a new entitlement for ADUs or is that one that was already? Because I do remember, I think, some discussion on ADUs being allowed in a certain portion of the Gateway Hub. But I saw that that was one of the underlying sections in this amendment.
I mean, it almost doesn't matter whether it was Gateway Hub or any, I, I've seen every MPUD that has allowed ADUs and I don't think there's a single one that has said that it didn't, that it counted towards their density.
Well, so, somebody wants to kind of...
Now, now, I want to be clear though. They all do say that they had to pay impact fees and by the way...
That's, that's great.
To his point about schools, we just adopted...
And are those ADUs included in the traffic study? When we're looking at the traffic impacts for that development?
They're paying mobility fees.
I don't care, but there's still the traffic and at the end of the day, at the end of the day, they don't collect those mobility fees until those houses are built and they're granted a C.U. And what we're hearing from the public is there's, there, these people are driving on these roads that aren't actually going to... Now, we've, we've built all these houses. These people are all now driving on the roads and they've now paid their mobility fees to pay to build a new or widen a road, but it takes five to 10 years to build a road. So, now we've put ADUs in it and we've made even more traffic out there that's using a road that may not get widened to a sufficient state till five or 10 years from now. And I'm, again, I don't think any of these...
That's a problem with any new housing development we approve, I want to be clear.
Well, it is, that is a problem, that's a problem of ours, but I don't want to, to, you know, make that problem worse by all of a sudden not counting the ADUs towards density. And there may be some argument for this, but I'm just not sure I'm there. That's all.
What's, what's the benefit of us approving a comp plan amendment ahead of an LDC amendment?
So, I guess I was gonna ask Jamie that question. Is the reason that, sir, with all due respect, you're gonna have to sit down now. Is the reason that the comp plan amendment is predating or preceding the land development code, is that because it has to be transmitted to the state? Is that why it's ahead of the land development code?
Yes, so this is a series of three public hearings. So, you, at the end, in February, we will be bringing the land development code and the comp plan amendment together. But this is three public hearings. So, the land development code is proposed to be presented in January, which will be around the transmittal time of the comp plan amendment. The other reason for, at least from our county attorney's recommendation, is to ensure this language is in place to make sure that the LDC changes are consistent with the comprehensive plan.
So, so Mr. Moody, I, I get your point, but I do think that if that shall is changed to a may, there's really nothing that obligates the board or the planning commission to adopt any land development code that allows... Even if you say staff brings you a land development code amendment and then basically you hate it. Okay, the planning commission hates it, publicates it, the board hates it. As long as the comp plan doesn't mandate these to occur, I don't think there's any harm in adopting the comprehensive plan. Saying, it, it can be allowed, it may be allowed, it'll be, may be considered. That's effectively what this comp plan amendment is doing, assuming you change the shall to a may.
Correct.
So, I mean, the problem we have right now...
Can we give...
So, let me just give you an example, okay? I realize I'm using extreme example, but it appears that even the public can have concerns about this, that if it's a child who's in the accessory dwelling unit, that, that should be allowed. Well, there may be circumstances where you'd have to go get a comp plan amendment just to allow that because it's a separate dwelling unit. And if it's, if that counts as density, they may have to go get a comp plan amendment from rez three to rez six just to allow their child to live in the back.
Well, explain that one, David, that makes no sense on its face. They live on an individual lot, we approve routinely lots that are 45 feet wide, they're 4,000, some of these are 4,000 square feet. Okay? Okay?
Well, okay, it's probably unlikely to happen at rez three, but we're...
That's what I'm getting at.
What could happen is rez one, okay? Where I think it's more likely to happen is you got a rez one, one unit per acre. They want to add an accessory dwelling unit for their, their child, they're, they're stuck.
And where my concern lies is, and I'll just cite my own situation, I live in a neighborhood zoned AR, that's one dwelling unit per acre. But my future land uses rez three. Okay? So, you've got a one-acre lot, all of a sudden I can have three houses on my one-acre, by, by flu designation. I understand that there may be a land development, a pending land development code amendment that would restrict that, but that's not before us today, we don't know, we haven't seen that. I think it would be helpful if we could see the, the whole picture at once. And although I understand the, the idea that the county attorney's office says, well, you approve the comp plan today and then that sets the table for you to find the land development code amendment consistent with the comp plan, there are often times where we are presented with a comp plan amendment and a companion rezoning on the same day and we get to see... And I actually wish that would happen all the time. But it would be, it's helpful to see the whole picture. I even think that goes to some of the connected city argument out there. We need to be able to start seeing things in the...
Big picture.
In the big picture.
So, Mr. Chairman, may I say something, please?
Yes.
I really appreciate all the comments here. We had not planned on facilitating a comp plan amendment, but our, our council suggested as the proper procedure. I have reviewed the draft ADU ordinance, it's a working internal draft and a lot of the questions that are outstanding can be answered with the ordinance draft. For example, we're restricting the size, requiring that there be a full-size kitchen unit in these, in these places. And maybe we can explore managing the population with an ADU per square footage, setting up some standards. And there's only gonna be one ADU per property, we're not gonna allow or permit multiple ADUs on...
So, I, I appreciate that, David, but see, that's why I say it would be helpful if you can bring that so that we can kind of see the whole picture. Yes, that does give me some comfort and I think that probably gives some of the residents comfort that have made comment too, that at least you're limiting it to one and on the one-acre property that's got a flu of rez three, you can't put three, two additional units on it, that's helpful. But there's, this is a, it's a new concept. I'm not against the concept, but I don't want to run headlong into this only to figure out we made a mistake shortly thereafter and then have to circle back to fix, and once some of these things are on the ground, they're unfixable forever.
But that was, but that was kind of my point. Is that the complance, if it says may and if it says can be considered, there's no obligation for us to do anything.
And I'm fine with that. My issue, my particular, my issue, and I don't know where the rest of my colleagues stand yet, I've probably been monopolizing more than my time. My issue is about the density, I agree with you on the may.
So, since this is a board priority project, may I suggest if the commission would entertain adopting the revised language to the comp plan, to may, we could set up a workshop item at the next board agenda and start reviewing with the commission the nuts and bolts of our draft ordinance.
Again, my, I'm fine with the may, that, that works for me. The bigger issue is whether or not the ADU counts against the dense, the allowed density by the flu designation. I don't, like I said, there's a, if, if we're gonna allow one ADU per property, rez six is actually rez 12. Res nine is, is rez 18. Do I think every, every house in the neighborhood is gonna have an ADU initially? No. But to Mr. Polterak's point, jeez, I can tell you that my little enterprising mind's going along and you're exactly right. Man, I'm gonna be an Airbnb millionaire with all the little Ted sheds I'm gonna put on my property and rent for $500 a, a week during scallop season.
So, I, I will tell you, to me, the reason I'm not concerned about this, because I've looked at it from a devil's advocate perspective. To me, the worst-case scenario is you just don't allow these by right. You make them special exception, conditional use approvals, I don't know if that's what staff's gonna propose.
But that's not what's before us today.
I, I understand, but to me that, if, if that's the concern, that there's gonna be areas where this, this could really cause problems, you could make it a special exception or conditional use approval, at which point they would be reviewed on case-by-case basis. I'm not suggesting you need to do that, I want to be clear about that.
We can't do that in a comp plan amendment.
But you could in the land development code.
Well, yes, I understand.
But the, and even on the density issue, you, you still have to tackle whether it counts towards zoning density. I mean, that could be addressed in the land development code. I think the primary reason staff is doing this, two reasons, one is that they can't adopt an ordinance that's then found to be inconsistent with the comp plan, so they have to do something in the comp plan to make it consistent. But also to prevent, you don't want to have a situation where, hey, Mrs. Smith on a rez one piece wants to add something for their, her child and she's now forced to not only, maybe she has to get a special exception approval, but getting a comp plan amendment is a big deal. It's a very long process to go through. And I do think that most of the concerns that you're talking about could be addressed through the land development code and possibly special exception process if necessary.
David, if we approve this now, we do get that situation next month. So, we, or whenever this, this gap between...
Even if you approve this now, they're still not allowed, just to be clear. The land development, unless the land development code's amended, these are not allowed currently, except for those few MPUDs that allow them.
So, does this speed up the overall process of getting these allowed and regulated? If we approve this today versus together?
It does, it, it stops somebody to have to potentially get a comp plan amendment to get an ADU. But it's not, but it's not going to allow them as a right or anything yet because until the land development code...
The comp plan process is a little longer because...
Right. So, I'm just trying to put all the timeline in my head, if it's, we're approving this, this is the, there's a process for this to get approved. I thought I heard we're gonna see the LDCs before the final approval of this.
Well, I'm not sure you will see the comp plan again, you will see the land development code.
We'll see the land development code before the final...
Before the board approves the comp plan, I think that's accurate, right? Before the board approves the comp plan, you'll see the land development code. But you won't, the comp plan won't be coming back to you.
Right.
That is correct, Amy Toll.
But I guess my point is, is as long as you change the shall to may, you are not forced to do anything, the board is not forced to do anything. It's just allowing it to happen if we come up with appropriate regulations for them. I'll also caution you that if, you know, when local governments don't do enough to allow for these types of things, that's when the state legislature comes in and says, it's like live local.
Live local.
You know, that's when we start getting bad state regulations because we haven't done enough on our own to address the housing crisis. And so, we, I think we need to do something affirmative. Otherwise, the state's gonna come in and say, ADUs allowed everywhere, we don't give a damn what the local government says.
State legislature's doing a good job of making condo owners homeless right now too, so.
So, I'm just saying, it's, it's a, this is staff's attempt and our board's attempt to affirmatively do something so the, the state doesn't come in and tell us what we have to do.
Yeah, and to echo David, so the flexibility in the language is what allows the LDC to implement that. So, the intent of the comp plan is to set those guidelines that the LDC would then set the standards for. So, that's where the may comes into practice, where it still allows or considers an ADU in these land use classifications. But like Moody or Commissioner, Mr. Moody, uh, sorry, said that it shall is more of a regulatory terminology, whereas may offers that level of flexibility.
And by, by the way, there's a very good example of this, we're, with home-based businesses, where the legislature just basically told us, you shall allow them. Doesn't matter whether they're generating additional traffic impacts or whatever, all the things that we talked about today, legislature just came and said, you have to allow them. So, my prediction is that we don't do something on ADUs, we may be in the same boat there.
And since it's not a required component of the zoning district right now or the LDC, then it's just almost like a placeholder until those standards come into place.
And by, I've also added, it's those kinds of horror stories, the good, when you tell Mrs. Smith, you gotta go get a comp plan amendment to get your, your home for your child, those are the kind of horror stories that make their way to the legislature, that causes bad laws to occur.
Very good. I think there was a lot of good things brought up in the discussion today.
Yep.
Anything further to add?
I was just gonna mention, we're gonna, we're speaking with the county, county attorney's office, we're gonna be speaking with this about the schools and stuff, just as impact. So, we're in conversation with them. Yeah. The other thing I want, just want to say is with, with the LDC, when it comes that, I, I just don't see it when it is, it comes to us and we're gonna approve it that same day. Do, do we, David, we used to do like the introduction of, of ordinances and then we'd have an introduction or, you know what I mean? We have like two days.
If, if you want a more thorough, it sounds like Mr. Engel is offering to have a more thorough sort of workshop-type discussion of the AD ordinance, if that's what he's offering and that's your desire, it doesn't, we, in theory, could have a, could be put on this agenda as a discussion item before you're asked to take action on it. I don't know if that's what Mr. Engel is offering or not.
I think it'd be a good idea, because I can't see it coming to us and adopting it on the same day, there'd be too much to talk about.
And we have had some ordinances in the past and I'll say parking is one example. The problem came, they're probably, probably, yeah, that's amazing. They probably could have benefited sort of from some workshop discussion before they came to you as an action item, but...
Yeah.
But I'll defer to Mr. Engel, I wasn't sure if that's what he was offering or not.
Yeah, well, we are, we're having a mid-range discussion of the ordinance draft. We have a process called ordinance development team and we're, we're bringing that OTT team, the draft ordinance, but we can do it concurrently with your review and your involvement.
So, you...
I'd love, you know, and I, I've spoken to Chair Ray on several occasions, we, we think, we'd love to have some workshops with the planning commission so they can assist us in these projects.
Let me ask this and maybe, maybe Terry, you can point out an example if I'm wrong and I'm thinking about something David said. So, my particular concern doesn't have to do with the may and shall, I'm, I'm fine with the may, it has to do with the density. He points out, we don't want Nancy Hazelwood's neighborhood, neighbor down there that owns one acre to have to go get a comp plan amendment to get an ADU. If, if Nancy's neighbor had one and a half acres, she'd be entitled to 1.5 units, does that round up to two? Under today's comp plan, not this proposed amendment?
That's my understanding, yes.
It does. So, the only case where somebody would be forced to get a comp plan amendment in rez one to allow an ADU would be where they owned less than 1.5 acres.
Well, if I may, so the comp plan density calculations will round up, but they still have to fit the local zoning.
I understand that, I, I, I understand that.
But, but I, I used rez one as an example, but you could have a similar situation with AG, AGR. I mean, there's other comp plan categories that have density limits in them that, or it could be an issue. I, I agree with you that it's unlikely to be an issue with rez three, rez six, rez 12 because in most of those cases, the developers aren't using most of their density anyway, they're probably...
So, then can... I, I guess what I'm trying to find is a solution that doesn't put an undue burden on somebody that lives in rez one or AG or AGR, but doesn't all of a sudden turn rez six into rez 12. That's a big jump. Listen, when you own two acres and I've got one house on it and I throw an accessory dwelling unit on it, that, that impact's probably not so bad. I'm more concerned about the rez nine area. And all of a sudden, that becomes rez 18, that's an impact that I might not be able to tolerate or a lot of people might not be able to tolerate.
But zoning can always be more restrictive than the comp plan.
John, we're not impacting that with this thing today, right?
It's that one particular statement that I have about it not counting against...
I mean, if, if...
A dwelling, I'm just trying to figure out how is a dwelling unit, not a dwelling unit, not a dwelling...
I mean, I guess in theory...
If it's an accessory dwelling unit, it's actually not a dwelling unit.
I guess in theory, we could change the law and just say it should not count towards comprehensive plan density.
Well, that's the way I interpret it, to me.
Okay, but I mean, but it... That's all staff is trying to accomplish with this, is to make sure that...
I get it, I'm just telling you where I'm not comfortable with it. It doesn't mean I'm not gonna support it either. I'm just telling you I'm not that comfortable with it. I'm just telling you I'm not that comfortable with it.
Maybe at this point, you should get somebody to make a motion to change shall to may and move on.
Right, I think, I think we've talked about this enough, can we get a motion?
I'll make a motion to, to approve it with the, the change from shall to may. I'm comfortable with the fact that the LDCA that's coming forward is gonna have all the, the right components to, to control it.
Is there a second?
A second.
All right, is motion and a second? No further discussion, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we've got one more item, does anybody appear to need a recess?
There'd be some strict zoning regulations when you-
Okay, we'll take a five-minute recess, please.
Force of-
It actually saves time in the long run.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Well, you did have an item like you said, probably-
And the board generally supports changes to industrial, so I mean, they probably didn't think you'd have to get up and let's say-
It was odd.
Yeah. Yeah, if she was gonna call something out, she should have picked one that maybe was not regular, or like-
Uh, where did Liam go?
Well, this, this last item is on Liam, I guess, but we don't know when we need him.
He had another meeting.
He's back to the top.
So if I don't, if I, you can't make it tonight.
Amy, who's handling P-13?
She is.
Are you doing P-13? Are you doing P-13?
I just remember, you know-
Just wanna make sure the question was, who's handling it here?
She knew it was gonna go faster, so she wanted to do it before P-12.
I don't, yeah.
Is it not regular because there's oppositions?
Honestly, I didn't think it was just gonna go that far.
Is, 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 is it P-13 not regular because there's oppositions?
Honestly, I don't know how it's-
Okay.
I originally intended it to be consent, and so I thought it was-
Well, I will tell you that the one lady there in the middle, she was directly back there, she lived there, she was here last year.
Oh, right, right, that's right.
All right, are you ready to start?
David. David. Still ready?
Yeah.
Okay, last but not least, P-13.
Okay, uh, Amy Toll, Planning Development and Economic Growth. So the item before you is PDE 25-0018, it is a comprehensive plan amendment in the name of CPA 2405, rural area four and urban expansion area maps. The proposal before you is a map amendment to maps two dash thirteen and two dash twenty-two. Uh, this is proposing to remove the rural neighborhood protection area from map two dash thirteen, and add or amend the rural, uh, expansion area to a rural ser, or I'm sorry, the, uh, expansion area to a service area on map two dash twenty-two. So, some history of what is currently going on, and then we'll go into some visuals. So, in 2006, the county adopted map two dash thirteen rural areas, which basically created four geographic areas to protect different types of rural, rural character areas. So, we have the northeast rural area, which is rural area one, we also have the rural protection area, the rural transition area, and the rural character area. Additionally, in 2010, the board also adopted what's called the urban concentration area. The urban concentration area consists of both the urban service area and the urban expansion area. The intent of this area is to ensure that the higher levels of density and intensity are prioritized within those areas with sufficient infrastructure in place. Uh, additionally, the urban service area is your full urban service area, where those densities are going to be concentrated, intensity's concentrated. The expansion areas were in place to think of future development patterns and ensure that those, that infrastructure is in place to expand the urban service area within that, that geographic boundary. Sure.
The difference between urban service area and urban expansion area?
Sure.
Just rewind a little bit.
Sure, urban service area has the infrastructure in place to accommodate a higher level of density and intensity. Urban expansion area is a vision to expand the urban service area, basically saying, we see that development is gonna happen in this area, but we wanna make sure that the infrastructure is, is in place before moving forward.
I'll give you the full story, because I actually just hear one of them. The full story is that when Pasco County went to adopt urban service area, it actually included the expansion area as well.
Correct.
But the Department of Community Affairs objected to, not the urban service area boundaries, but the area that's called expansion. They didn't want it to be part of our urban service area. That being said, it's still part of the urban mobility fee district, it's, it's-
Okay, but the key is that the infrastructure is in place.
To accommodate the level of density, so it's a vision to expand those densities in those areas. Essentially, the urban service, or the urban expansion areas are primarily along your major, like, I-75 corridors. Um, so this one in particular is your I-75 corridor, then there's one in the east side of the county over by 301. Um, so there's only two areas that are expansion, the rest is urban service. Urban service area, well, urban concentration area, which is your overarching umbrella for those two, is your west and south market.
And is there a criteria for the infrastructure which must be in place?
Uh, the policy just states that there should, there's adequate infrastructure in place, and then you have to come in for a comp plan amendment from urban service area to expansion area.
Yeah, my only point was that but for the Department of Community Affairs, this would have just all been urban service area. And this, the Department of Community Affairs was disbanded like a year later, so I'm not sure there's any material difference, at least as it relates to Pasco County, between the urban service area and the urban expansion area. It, it, we, they're all just called, and I think the whole thing is called the urban concentration area.
Correct.
We treat that as our urban area of our county regardless of the label you put on it.
Right. So the intent is to prioritize those higher densities and intensities within that area because there's services to accommodate that?
I understand.
Okay. All right, um, so here's a visual representation of the rural areas, I did copy the policy in there for you to kind of understand the direction that we're going. So, policy flew 2.3.2 is the establishment of the rural neighborhood protection area. Um, this is the policy that was established in 2006. So, Pasco County shall recognize rural neighborhood protection areas as defined in map two dash thirteen rural areas, as areas that include existing residential neighborhoods that deserve and require special protection from the intrusion of urban uses densities and intensities. I want to highlight, um, existing rural neighborhoods in this policy. So just a close-up of what the area is, um, proposing. So as you can see, the green is your area four, which is your neighborhood protection area. The hatched area is your overlap, so you can see where that inconsistency is now created. So, rural areas, um, so this is your overall area four. Area four currently consists of seventeen thousand four hundred and sixteen acres. The proposal right now is to amend or adjust 628 acres. So, as I noted, the rural areas or rural neighborhood protection area is intended to protect neighborhoods, existing neighborhoods. So, as you can see, the yellow or the light coloring there, that is a Cypress, Cypress Creek Preserve. All of this land is owned by swift mud. Additionally, under that, the future land use classification is a combination of rez one and conservation lands. So, the rez one is potentially, um, not gonna be developed because it is swift mud lands. Uh, additionally, there's another visual that shows you where the wetlands kind of meander through this area as well. So, the highlight for this is to identify those existing neighborhoods, the intent is to preserve and protect existing neighborhoods. Um, so here's one neighborhood that we, is intended to be protected. We also have identified another neighborhood here, so it's about four or five different neighborhoods in the general area. Um, additionally, I did look back and picked a couple lots within these subdivisions. These subdivisions predate the establishment of the rural area. So they were in place prior to, right now, 2000. So around 2000, I've got, there's one from 78, 94. So these existing rural, or these existing neighborhoods within the rural protection neighborhood area predated the establishment of the rural areas. So here's your wetland, so it kind of gives you a further picture depiction of where those neighborhoods are located, how it relates to the swift mud lands that are protected as well, as well as conservation lands in the area. These are the four protected areas. So, this is the map that is being proposed, um, so this is our map within the comprehensive plan, the proposed removal is highlighted above. And then we go into the conflict of the urban service area. So here is the, uh, urban service area, so again, rural areas created in 2006, urban service area or urban expansion, urban concentration areas created in 2010. So in 2010, the board prioritized these areas for density, higher levels of density and intensity, ensuring that the infrastructure and services are in place for those areas. So, policy flew 9.1.9, urban expansion area. Any areas in the urban concentration area which are not initially included in the urban service area shall be considered as future urban service area expansion area, or, or, yeah, expansion area. Uh, expansion of the urban service area shall be accomplished through a comprehensive plan amendment demonstrating compliance with applicability provisions of state and local law. So the intent of this, and I'll go back to kind of this visual of, well, I guess that's not a good one. Um, I wish I could highlight, I probably should have put a slide. So as you can see, this area, this is the area that's being proposed. There's already a higher level of density that's been, um, uh, constructed, platted, approved. We also have, um, another portion of it, so this development was already approved, and then it kind of cuts off the bottom of it, so there's no real boundary or intent. This area is predominantly a rez three or higher, um, and then the area to the west side of Bellamy Brothers, or old, excuse me, Old Pasco Road, is rez one or lower. So again, the rural areas, so urban expansion area, we have coordinated, coordinated with our utilities department to ensure that that, the change would be compliant, supported by them as well, we do have support from Pasco County Utilities, ensuring that, or identifying that services are already provided, as you can tell, most of, or a portion of this, I'd say maybe about a third or two-thirds of the proposed area is already platted and services are already in, in place for them. So, policy flew 9.1.7, this is the proposal. So we are proposing to change the urban expansion area to the urban service area. Pasco County, uh, urban service area pursuant to section 1, 163.6.316450, Florida statute shall be the urban service area identified in a map, so the proposed amendment is also consistent with, with state statute. This is the overall map two dash twenty-two showing the proposed change from expansion area to service area. I'd like to just highlight, this is the other expansion area, we're not considering that at this time. These are the policies that they are consistent with. And with that, we recommend a local planning agency find the proposed amendment consistent with the comprehensive plan, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
You said utilities, says that the infrastructure's in place to provide urban service?
Correct.
What about the road?
Uh, excuse me. So, this is currently on, um, Old Pasco Road, abutting- So, this is currently on Old Pasco Road, abutting I-75. So, I haven't had any issues with the infrastructure on Old Pasco Road, but we could identify potential expansion CIP.
Sorry, say that again.
If there's, so if it's on the LRTP or the CIP, what the proposed expansion is. But the infrastructure currently is in place to accommodate the level of density because the density has essentially already been approved.
What's the allowed level of density in the urban service area?
Well, the urban service area, it's, it depends on the future land use. So, it's all the future land uses that fall within the urban service area. Essentially rez three or higher, we do have some rez ones, I guess, in there as well. But it's, it's any future land use classification within the urban service area. The urban service area or the future land use changes do consider your long-range transportation plan rather than any like timing and phasing zoning impacts. So, it envisions your, I think, right now out to twenty fifty. Okay?
Anything else up here for Amy?
Yeah, can you go two slides ahead?
Yeah, right there. Uh, yeah. I was just looking at that, and I see Angeline and all those developments on forty-one are not in there.
Correct.
I'm just wondering why they're not.
Yeah, currently, those were not part of the...
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, Angeline for references is down here. So, I think Bexley is down here. So, Bexley is an urban service area.
Why is that?
I'm not sure.
So, it goes back to the urban service area.
It goes back to, yeah, I mean, at the time that Angeline was approved, there really had no infrastructure, just rural. So, and so it was put into the, it's not in a rural area, to be clear, Angeline. It's in a suburban, the suburban, suburban mobility fee district and market area. So, it doesn't, we do envision suburban level development for Angeline. It's just not in the urban service area.
And Angeline is also planned to be...
Now, it's not to say that if Angeline, once it has services throughout all of Angeline, is it possible it could be added to the urban service area? Yes, that's a possibility.
So, David, I got a question. Was there any discussion, if you were around back then? She read a comp plan policy that was the purpose and intent of the rural area, and then all of a sudden, we decide that policy was that it's a rural neighborhood protection area. Okay, and they deserve and require special protection from the intrusion of urban uses. Why would you have ever placed an urban expansion area over it? And doesn't the naming of it now as an urban service area conflict with that particular policy? Why is that policy of any less importance than having an urban service area policy?
I think what Amy's, I think said, but I'll try, so I'll try to rephrase what Amy said. I, I think, the, she, she was basically pointing out that the ten of that policy was to protect existing neighborhoods, and this area is not, was not an existing neighborhood at the time that area four was included in the comp plan. And it has since developed with suburban or urban level intensities, and it's, was included, it was included in the urban expansion area because the board had an affirmative desire to include the I-75 corridor in the urban service area for both residential and employment reasons. So, I also suspect, suspected the area east of, this is Old Pasco, right?
Yes.
That because of its proximity to the interstate, the board never felt that it was going to ever really be protected because of its proximity to the interstate.
So, what constitutes an existing neighborhood? If I live on five acres and my next door neighbor lives on ten acres and my other neighbor lives on five acres there, is that an existing neighborhood? What, what is it?
Well, I, I don't know what was there before. Amy, can you?
Are there houses there today that were there in two thousand and six? We should be able to look at a historic area and figure that out.
Lieutenant Pito's playing development, playing development economic growth. The four neighborhoods that we're talking about have a particular land use or land development pattern. All of them are platted, they have streets. If we were to zoom in on each of them, you would see the distinct, a distinct subdivision that's basically developed and flowing throughout the area.
Only a subdivision is a neighborhood?
That's the pattern, the consistent pattern between the four red circles there. When we go to the east side of Old Pasco Road, the development pattern is different. It's not the same as the other four.
All right, so this is what I'm trying to ask him. I'm sorry if I'm not asking the question in the right way. What is different on the east side of, of Old Pasco Road? If I live on the east side of Old Pasco Road, what's different about where I live that doesn't deserve the protection that those other four circles do?
There's not a organized and developed subdivision land development pattern like the other four areas. So...
But isn't that what makes something rural?
Okay, but... But this is not intended for simply rural protection, but rural neighborhood protection. So, it has to have the characteristics of the neighborhood. What's defined to us right now is what's showing on the plans.
But that's okay.
But, but can we focus on the area, the, the specific area that's trying to be removed and...
Yeah, that's what I'm asking about.
Okay.
And what he's, I think if I'm understanding him, what he's saying is unless you're some planted subdivision, you're not a neighborhood. And I would tell you that if you want to go out by Shady Hills or up in Hudson, there's a lot of unplanted land, and I wanted you to tell those people that live out there that that's not their neighborhood.
But I'm not sure that the area that's under review falls within that. I believe it's now been approved for suburban or urban level.
It's rez three flew.
That's the difference.
Every bit of the land out there is rez three?
East of Old Pasco.
Your area that you're talking about is not rez three levels of, I mean, so, that's why I said we need to focus on the specific area that they're asking to be removed. It, it has now become a suburban or urban level of density that is not consistent with rural, anybody's definition of rural, whether it's your definition or Mr. Pito's definition.
I'm not suggesting, I'm trying to understand what that, that is. I'm not saying I disagree with him.
So, so, so I don't think that anybody would suggest that rez three is a rural level of density.
Well, the future land use on my property is if you want to drive down my street, it's pretty rural.
In our comp plan.
That's, the other major distinction for the area is the presence of utilities.
There's no utilities in my neighborhood.
Commissioner Moody, with all due respect, we need to focus on the land that's, this is not your neighborhood.
Are there utilities in every, available to all of these properties?
On Old Pasco.
They are, they're all there today.
According to the capital program projects.
I'm just trying to understand that.
I guess, let me just ask this question in a different way. Putting aside how you define rural neighborhood protection area and what its original purpose is, in your opinion, Mr. Pito's, is this area, based on its existing approvals and land use, is it a rural area?
Based on the future land use, it's rez three. So, I would not, it would not be defined by the comprehensive plan.
I mean, based on its infrastructure as well.
And based on the infrastructure, would not be defined as rural. And, and the inclusion in urban concentration area as well.
Okay, move on to public comment.
The first one we have on our list is Kim Briarly.
Michael Pultoric, I'm on record. I want to find a specific slide for you. I didn't know if it was left or right, I'm sorry. There we go, right there. How do I use the pointer on this thing? I'll go short, gentlemen, I promise. Can we just get rid of all of the rural protection areas in the county? I mean, let's, why have them? It was already pointed out that in the rural protection area, right where the pointer is right there, we already approved and have put into place increased density, which is having a direct impact on all of the infrastructure for here. Why protect an area if we're not going to protect the area? That's my first question. Why say we're going to protect the northeast or the north portion of the county or district for if Angeline's going to go in, in a rural protected area?
I don't think Angeline is going in a rural protected area, sir.
On the map with the utilities, it, it's...
I just, I just don't want you to misstate anything, that's all.
And I appreciate that, okay? But shouldn't we have to redefine prior to approving the density that we're going to impact an area with first? The reason I say that is I travel Old Pasco Road three to four days a week. It is already at capacity, and I'm surprised we don't kill more people out there. The lighting is terrible, there's turns all over the place. It cannot handle the current traffic, and we haven't even brought into the discussion all of the ADUs that we're going to allow on both sides of the road now. If we're not going to protect an area, and all of the homes that were there in oh four, prior to any of us having discussions, they were protected for a reason. If we're not going to stand by it, I just don't understand why we're going to pretend we're protecting it. Doing this is going to set the stage for additional density from fifty-four all the way to fifty-two. And as Commissioner Moody mentioned, the road there, I believe the answer was it's not even in the plans to expand it. The road there can't handle the current density, much less Old Pasco development, the developments that have already been approved. And if we can't handle what we currently have, how are we going to set the stage for future approvals to increase density in developments without restriction, because that's how it happens, in areas like rural protected districts? I, I, it just doesn't make sense.
Mr. Chair? I would, I would point out a couple of things real quick. We have a conflict here, and the underlying zoning is R three. In fact, we have a road improvement project on the CIP to widen Old Pasco Road up to the high school and the school, and the middle school up there. And we have sidewalks installed, and it's already zoned R three. We're just, we have a conflict that we wanted to remove.
You mean land use R three?
We're, we're not, we're not trying to cut into the rural protection area or the rural, the neighborhood protection area. Already, there's an established land use policy on the area in question. It's already in the urban service area. We have utilities, we're widening Old Pasco Road, we have sidewalks going up to the schools, and we just wanted to clean up the map, basically.
I didn't say I was against this.
Good, good point, David.
Explain what it is.
Okay.
Kim Briarly, eighty-nine forty-six, Old Pasco Road, I saw on record. I live on Old Pasco Road. If there's ever an accident on seventy-five, my road is a parking lot. I can't even get out of my driveway because it's stopped in any given direction. And that's not counting school buses and everything that adds to it right now. I do feel that my, my home being on five acres with my animals, my chickens and everything, we're in a neighborhood. I talk to my neighbors regularly, they have acreage also. We come together, we help each other out with fallen trees. We do things that people in the cookie cutter neighborhoods do. We just have bigger yards. Doesn't make us not a rural neighborhood, it doesn't make us that we shouldn't be protected. I think it was set up so that we would be. My home was built in the nineties. It was exactly what was supposed to be protected.
Is your home on water and sewer?
I'm sorry?
Are you on county water and sewer?
No, I have well and septic.
Is there water and sewer adjacent to the boundaries of your property?
Um, I, my neighbors don't have any. I think it stops at kind of where the light, where the high school is. I don't know that there's any further north than that stoplight. There's nothing there, and Old Pasco Road doesn't even have a shoulder. So, if there is any kind of an emergency, an emergency vehicle can't even get anywhere because there's just, no, it's woods. You have to go off the road into the woods. There's nothing there when the traffic is stopped, and it happens about every other day now. So, it's already really bad. If something's already been made in R three, we can't, can't unring the bell. But I don't see any point in making what is already not comfortable, absolutely excruciating. The storms flooded my property terribly. I can't imagine what's going to happen if there are multiple townhomes and things like that thrown onto an adjacent property that we're not going to have any permeable surfaces. I'm going to be that surface, I'm going to be where everybody's water flows. I'm not asking anybody to make huge changes. Keep the protection that I was already given. Keep the protection that my neighbors were already given. We're just asking for that. I don't want you to make any knee jerk. I just want to have what I bought, the way of life that I bought. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next on the list is Kristy Zimmer. And for the record, that is the last name I have on the list.
Kristy Zimmer, address of record. Who puts urban against the Swift Mud property? Who puts urban over a rural overlay, protected overlay? Why have rural protected overlay if you're not going to pay any attention? Go ahead and develop the northeast area. Go ahead and slam it full of houses with these developers. Go ahead and put in a new toilet to tap or whatever you want. You're destroying our rural communities. I'm a realtor, I've been doing this since nineteen eighty-seven. I've sold a lot of those homes to people that got out of the city, got away from the urban. What happened to suburban? I've heard you mention it. But there's no suburban in between the urban and the rural protected areas. What happened there? It's ridiculous. Why buy the rural American dream lifestyle, invest their life savings, or go into debt to be in the rural area, only to have those with more money come along and try to change it? It's time that we not consider the money involved. It's time we start thinking about the people who have already invested into this community. We're putting, we're stealing their lifestyle and their dreams for what? They've already invested into Pasco County. Because the developers threatened to sue us? How about class action lawsuit from the citizens for taking away what you already promised us, and we've sold to them? It's not okay. Pasco County made a mistake in two thousand and ten by creating this overlay. Pasco County can fix that by granting what they've done, remain, and put it back to its rural area. Commissioners have one job, they create ordinance. They can also repeal ordinance, and they can amend ordinance. And I would highly recommend that you make a recommendation to the board to please put this back into its rural participation like it should be. Pasco Road is not a conditioned road to handle the amount of traffic it's already getting. In the very least, how about a moratorium on any further projects until Pasco Road is improved appropriately? Thank you.
Oh, Nancy. You didn't sign up. Just kidding, go ahead. What's another three minutes?
So Nancy Hayes wouldn't, my name's on record, Kristy. All right, so everything everybody has said, the public, I agree with. I think this is setting a bad precedent for all the rural areas. This type of thing is where Pasco basically loses its integrity by telling people this is a rural area and then just kind of forgetting it. So if you're going to do this, what are you giving back to the people? You're taking away the rural area. My understanding of this amendment was a mistake was made. It's conflict zoning by Pasco County. But we, the people, shouldn't bear the blunt of your mistakes. So how about this idea? This is not the first taking of the rural areas. So why don't you give us back more rural areas? If you're going to take one, give one back. Because you need your rural areas in Pasco County, they're essential to your water. I think what Kristy says, correct? You're going to find a way to keep it in there. But if you're going to take it, well, give us back some land. Give some money to Eglash and let them put it on us. Thank you all.
Thank you. David, did you say that Old Pasco Road is under construction for widening? Or in the process?
Yes, we have a widening program now in the first phase. They're constructing four lanes from south of the Rooker site up through the intersection of Overpass Road. And they have a capital plan to extend up Old Pasco Road to four lanes up to the high school area.
That's it?
I don't know what the CIP schedule is. I know that we have sidewalks going in now and there's other work.
So we had a case, it was a year ago, almost to the day here in this room, where we entertained a case, and this was an issue. It was brought up as an issue, I'm not sure that we resolved the case. This conundrum of the maps.
Well, to answer your question, sir...
But during that case, there was testimony that there was no money, there were no plans for Old Pasco Road, that we were looking at something out beyond five, maybe 10 years. Has that changed since then?
The programming is scheduled for construction in 2025.
Just to the high school?
Yes. And we are under...
Not the entire lane?
We're under environmental route studies and design to construct and widen Old Pasco Road from the south of the Rooker site down to Western Chapel Boulevard. That's the last phase.
Like, how far out is that?
I believe probably three or four years to start construction on that. And I'm just extrapolating from the normal...
It's on the CIP and funded?
Excuse me?
Is that on the CIP and funded?
I can't answer that.
I believe it is. The segment he's talking about that goes to the high school, I think the answer to that question...
I wasn't asking about the rest.
If we're talking about north of the high school, I don't believe that's in the five-year CIP.
There is no plans for north of the high school, is there?
No, they may be in the long-range transportation plan, but I don't know that it's in the...
Right, that's what I thought I remembered from the hearing last year, was that that was not...
The immediate plans are to widen it to the high school.
Okay, all right.
And we're signed to the requirement to go from future urban expansion to urban areas to have infrastructure in place. Meaning existing, right?
Yeah, but I mean, technically, a two-lane road can be infrastructure. I mean, I understand...
It's probably substandard infrastructure.
It's still infrastructure, I mean, I can't...
So is it not adequate?
I can tell you there's areas, there's other parts of our urban service area that have congested roadways.
Certainly.
So I can't, there's no guarantee that our entire urban service area is going to be uncongested at all times.
No, certainly not, I'm just...
If that was the case, then we wouldn't have an urban service area, I'm just...
Right. But where I'm at right now is I tend to agree with a lot of the public comment. This was rural area. There was no comp plan amendment for those densities that aren't rural that are already there. But the infrastructure's not... We say it was a conflict, but we created that, the county created that conflict. If you're living there, I don't know how it doesn't feel like they're taking away rural area, or taking away rural area, because we literally are.
But that side of the roads are Res 3, the other side's Res 1.
Was it Res 3 when we made it rural protection area?
But that's not what we're here asking today.
I understand, I'm just trying to...
I think you raised a legitimate concern, but you probably should have, you probably never should have changed it to Res 3 if there was an issue.
Exactly, and that's where these folks are coming from is, at some point, to make that Res 3, there should have been a comp plan amendment to do that, right?
There was.
There was a comp plan amendment to change it to Res 3 at some point.
But that would have been in conflict with the rural protection, or no?
It depends, well, my guess is, I don't, Terry, do you know when it was changed to Res 3? Was that before or after the urban expansion area was placed over?
But I think I heard Commissioner Moody's mentioned earlier, there are two ways to fix this, and I think, what's the other way to fix this that you see?
Well, I want to be clear, though. I'm not comfortable with us taking away Res 3 to a property owner that we've already given it to.
I understand. I don't think anybody's suggesting that.
Right, but I don't know, I guess the inherent conflict is not necessarily the urban expansion versus rural. It's the Res 3 versus rural.
David, I can answer that. The Res 3 was established when the comprehensive plan was established. It's original.
Oh, it's original?
Correct.
Do we know how, do we know how... We keep saying the mistake was putting urban expansion, but maybe the mistake was putting rural protection over an area that was Res 3?
The Res 3 expands all the way up to county, or State Route 52. So there's a whole swath of Res 3 that expands from Overpass to 52, that's original. So they envisioned Res 3 in that area, back in 1989.
I think the issue, and what I was trying to get to with my questions about adding this to the urban service area was, one, the requirement to be in the urban service area is the infrastructure is in place. But in that urban service area, it was to prioritize the creation of additional urban densities, meaning we want to go from Res 3 to Res 6, or Res 9, or Res 12 out there. That's why we want to change the map red to the urban service area. If it's all Res 3, that's already there and we're happy with Res 3, there's no need to change the map. The purpose of changing the map is to open the door for greater density in the area.
Well, let's look what we asked of, how did this originate? I mean, what caused staff to want to make the change in the first place? Did the property owner have concerns with the way it was mapped currently?
For the urban service area versus the rural area?
No. I understand how the urban expansion area was put over, because I was here when that happened. My question is, this conflict between it being designated rural and urban expansion, what made staff want to fix the conflict? What was the origin of this desire to fix the conflict?
There was an application that had come before the planning commission, and the discrepancy in the maps was identified.
And the application was to do what again? Because I'm sorry if I don't remember.
Yeah, I think it was for townhomes.
The application was for, it was a year ago.
Okay, sorry, that's probably why I don't remember.
The application was to change to Res 6 to allow a future MPUD or zoning to allow the development of townhomes. But I will say, as someone who was quite, I think the guy that seconded the motion that night, although we recognize there was this conundrum in the comp plan, I don't feel like it was that the board decided the case based strictly on the conundrum of the comp plan. I think the discussion centered around that the area wasn't ripe for Res 6 at the time.
And I think...
And we said, or remember we said, if they might have come in for Res 3 and done something single-family detached, we probably would have looked at it a different way. It's that we thought townhomes and Res 6 was a bridge too far, given the character of the area. I'm pretty sure you can go back on the tape, and we had some discussion about that.
You're right. But I don't know that putting it in the urban expansion area necessarily requires you to change it to Res 6. Res 3, we have lots of Res 3 in our urban service area. That's not an uncommon condition.
But so then what's the purpose of putting this in the urban service area? The urban service area is to prioritize more urban densities, like I said. It's already Res 3, well then you can just leave it the way it is today. What's the problem? You got Res 3. You want to make it urban service area, so you can make it Res 6, Res 9, Res 12, Res 24.
Terry.
Or whatever ones we adopt in the 2025 plan.
Terry, what's before us today is to remove that portion of the rural area, correct? And to change the urban expansion area to urban service area, right?
Correct.
So it sounds like, correct me if I'm wrong, is your concern with making the urban expansion area urban service area or removing the rural area?
No, all I'm, I haven't actually said that I'm concerned with.
Okay.
I'm saying that that's what...
I'm sorry, that's true.
I'm saying that that's what it appears the intent is. Is that a correct statement?
The intent's twofold, right, Terry? That's what he just said.
She said the purpose of the urban service area was to prioritize urban densities. Well, we already have Res 3, there's nothing to prioritize if that's urban, unless you want to prioritize Res 6, Res 9, Res 12, Res whatever.
This is to provide the urban services.
Terry, let me ask you a question. Is this already in the urban mobility fee district? Because I was here when these boundaries were set, and to a large extent, the fight over the boundaries at the time they were set was about mobility fees. Because...
Yes.
And the board was very careful about saying, these are the areas where we want to have lower mobility fees, so we are going to encourage growth in these areas. And they made a conscious decision, because there was actually, at one point, staff was kind of objecting to including the, what we call the fingers. The fingers up the Suncoast and the fingers up the interstate. Because it was really just going to be the West Market area in southern Pasco County. But the board made a conscious decision to include the fingers up the Suncoast and up the interstate because they wanted lower mobility fees and urban levels of density to come with those lower mobility fees along the interstate and Suncoast corridor. I can't tell you whether that was a good or bad decision, okay, from a planning perspective. But the board made that decision. And to say that it was an accident, I don't think it was an accident. I was there. Because there were some of those fingers, staff was fighting with the board saying, we don't want to add those areas to our urban service area. And the board said, we want them part of our urban service area. So it was not an accident. The board made a very conscious, intentional decision to urbanize the interstate corridor and urbanize the Suncoast corridor.
I'd also like to add that it follows the same boundary as the South Market area, which envisions the same. So the South Market area runs along State Road 54 and then up those two spines, so it's 589 and I-75. So essentially, the urban service area, the urban concentration area is implementing the vision of the South Market area that establishes the criteria for the level of density and intensity.
There was also the other urban expansion area you mentioned we weren't including at this time, why is that?
Terry, can you get the question? The question is, why are...
There was a second urban expansion area that was shown on the map that we aren't including at this time to include into the urban area. Why are we not including that one now?
That area is a much larger area. What we know about the finger of I-75 is that there's quite a bit of development that has been recently approved. The Gateway Hub is at the northwest corner of I-75 and State Road 52. Pasco Town Center, the double branch development and connected city is at the southeast corner of I-75 and State Road 52. And there's a lot of development happening around the Overpass interchange as well. So that whole area is filling in quite a bit. A lot of utilities have already come through to service that development pursuant to the urbanization that the urban expansion area was envisioned.
But as I said originally, I'm not sure there's any material difference between the urban service area and urban expansion area in terms of our regulatory framework. They're both the urban concentration area, and they both have the same mobility fee district. There's no...
Did he answer to your mobility fee question?
Yeah, he answered, it's part of the urban mobility fee district.
That brown color you see on the screen?
Okay.
That's the urban mobility fee standard.
So it's already in the urban mobility fee district?
Yes.
And I realize that most of the people sitting here today were not here when we had those fights and discussions with the board. But it was discussed far more than, whatever decision was made to put rural protection over that property, I can guarantee you that the discussion about putting urban on the boundaries that they are was a far more extensive discussion by the Board of County Commissioners than the original decision to put rural there.
And we're, I mean...
I mean, I can't tell you why the board did what they did, but it was a vigorous debate about these boundaries of the urban service area. And I remember Richard Garing getting up and arguing with the board. We don't want to go, we don't want to include these fingers. He was emphatic, we need to draw the line somewhere. We can't have fingers of urban going all up everywhere in the county. And the board said, we want these to be urban.
And to be clear, we're making a recommendation to the board for the assistance of the board as well?
It goes to the board.
Yeah, yeah.
That's all, everything we do other than special exception varies.
I just don't want, I feel like some people are arguing that this was a mistake to put urban over this piece of property, and I guarantee you, I was here, it was intentional, not a mistake. I'd probably call Barbara up here and see, Barbara was here when I was...
The mistake was more than not removing the rural.
Yes.
And the oversight was not removing the rural at that time.
I understand that.
Which is what we're trying to do today.
So then the question becomes, do we want to make it, or is it appropriate to make it urban service area where we're trying to prioritize, if I understood the comment right, where we're trying to prioritize additional density in the area? Is that, am I correct in the understanding of that, Amy? It's confusing, because we've got urban expansions, urban concentrations, and urban service areas.
But that's what I'm saying, that label, please do not put too much into that label.
But what's the necessity to have 3?
Because DCA made us have 3, that's the only reason we have 3.
The concentration area is the overall, and the 2 underneath.
If it's called urban concentration area, it was intended to, the board wanted it to be urban. Whether it has a sub-label of urban service or urban expansion is only because the Department of Community Affairs said we got too aggressive on our boundaries for the urban service area, so we had to relabel part of it as urban expansion. And a year later, the Department of Community Affairs went away.
All right. So what was the reasoning that they said the county was too aggressive in expanding the USA into that area at that time? Based on what I hear, what Amy read, I can only assume it's because the infrastructure is... I can only assume it's because the infrastructure is not in place. That's the, that's the part-
Well, I've also, I've also to you, at the time that was done, a lot of the new planning things that have happened in this area that Terry just talked about did not exist. We didn't have double branch. We didn't have Gateway Hub. There's a lot of new development that has been planned and approved since DCA made that decision. So, and the interstate has been widened since that happened. At the time that happened, I believe the interstate was not in its current configuration. So there's a lot that has occurred since DCA made that decision. I don't know the DCA, first of all, they don't exist anymore. And they brought, there's no, there's no state agency to object to our boundaries anymore. But even if they, there was, I'm not sure they would object. For example, they objected to the eastern extension as well. We've since built State Road 56 east. It did not exist when DCA objected. So I can't tell you that that decision would be made the same way today.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Can, can we put on the map with the MPUDs and an aerial and just could zoom into that area? Is that a question over there? MPUD layer and then the aerial layer. And then take off the, yeah, take off the middle. And just kind of zoom in there. There's a large undeveloped tract there to the right of the, the cursor. Can you zoom in just a little bit more above that? Yeah. So that, can you go up a little bit to the left? That property there, it's a large land area, just south of there. You're, you're good. Just that open area there, just to south of that. So could they come in and develop a rez three today, this open area of land there?
I'm sorry, which open land is it?
No, 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 no.
No.
The Cochidi Lake, yeah, right there, right, yeah, right there.
I believe that's a, an old landfill.
Okay, so that's not going to be developed.
Yeah, that's landfill.
And then go a little bit to the south. And there's just all these little, so what would happen if it was going to be developed? You'd have to buy up these pieces and develop. I mean, I, what I'm trying to get at is the odds of this being developed is very slim, I think, because you've got a bunch of small acre, or not small acre, but there's, there's single developments.
Individual, single owner.
Yeah. And so what's the, what's the possibility of that going then to the south, then you got a wetland?
Well, apparently we had an application a year ago to do that very thing.
That was the one there, was that at Hadlock?
Yeah.
It was on Hadlock, yeah.
On Hadlock? Okay. And what was it for, rez six?
Res six for townhomes.
Okay. All right. And we denied it?
Well, we recommended.
Yeah. So we could do that again if it came in again.
Yeah, we're not changing the land use here. We're cleaning up a map.
Right, right.
That's all we're doing.
Thank you. I did want to, one more thing I wanted to say, I was looking on the CIP map, and the one that's on the county website shows, and I'll read it off, Old Pasco Road, where's this, Old Pasco Road widening two to four lanes north of County Road 54 to State Road 52. It has conduct, construction, which is the C, for fiscal year 26, 27. And I got that off the website. I don't know if that's in stone, but-
What are those limits again?
North of County Road 54 to State Road 52, widening two to four lanes, Old Pasco Road.
Yeah, without having the county engineer here, I can't. I know that, that there's been discussions about immediate plans to build it to the high school. And I think you all may have been participating in some of those discussions in terms of-
Yeah, we built, I mean, in front of the high school, it's all done, four lanes.
But I'm just saying, we, I, I can't speak, I think it is being done in phases.
Yeah.
So-
Okay.
It's possible that that second phase is in our CIP. I don't know.
Yeah.
But I'm fairly confident that the first phase will be bringing it to the high school.
Down to Wesley Chapel Boulevard, they're just doing PD and E now, so it makes sense that 2027 would be-
But, but it's a good point, Mr. Tannell, which is that this road is a priority for the Board of County Commissioners. The board has recognized that it's got, there's a lot of development occurring on it and that it's in need of widening. So it is a high, high priority for the board.
I'll show it on the overhead and quick, just so-
What are you pulling up here, Terry? Just so we know.
This is the capital improvement program. The green line is indicating the twenty, year, construction year 2025 for Old Pasco Road, which basically goes to the high school and then the south to the purple line there. That's also widening to four lanes. If you click on the purple line, Patty. Yeah. And that's a 2028 construction year for the purple.
2028.
Nancy, unless somebody wants to call you, you've already had your chance, so that you know the policy.
And does, Terry, does this mean that those, that there's, the funding has already been allocated for, that that's within five years, 2028? So does that mean the funding's been set aside for that road or?
If they're identifying a construction year, very highly likely that, that's the construction, that's-
I think the answer is yes. Would it not be on our CIP map if there wasn't funding allocated to it?
I don't know, it's a different project management issue.
And how far does the purple go to?
That should go down to fifty-four.
Wesley Chapel.
Yeah, Wesley Chapel Boulevard, that's right. Yeah.
I get that. Okay.
And we're also wanting it was to drop the boulevard, too.
That, this is, that's actually the most helpful thing I've seen.
Okay. Anybody ready to make a motion? More questions?
So... To put something in the urban service area, the infrastructure needs to be in place. I'm not sure the infrastructure's in place. But I'm now, for the first time, seeing, when we were here a year ago, we were told that this section of Old Pasco Road is 10 years out. This map tends to indicate it's four years out. That makes me think differently than I might have thought a year ago.
Did you say there's no regulatory difference essentially between urban expansion area and urban area?
In terms of the, I don't, I mean, Terry can come and tell me if I'm wrong, but I don't know that our comp plan treats them, they're both part of the urban concentration area. I don't believe there's any regulatory difference unless I'm missing something. And they're both in the same urban mobility fee district. But staff can tell me if they think that there's some material difference between the two.
I think traditionally in, in previous applications that have come before this body and the Board of County Commissioners, the urban expansion area has been treated as, the same as part of the urban service area, that we are, we are intending to, we're anticipating urban-style development to fill this in. And that's exactly what's taken place over the years.
But this is the first time we've seen that there's a plan to build the road sooner. I don't know what's changed in terms of the pace when we were here a year ago. We were talking like 10 years.
Well, I will tell you what part of what drove it is the opening of the interchange.
Okay, well, nonetheless, it's, that's different.
Yes.
Okay, all right. That's a different consideration.
And there's an industrial park, because David will tell you that the Rooker Industrial Park, which has opened, and so there's a need to get more free traffic.
I understand mobility fees, though the urban service area mobility fees are less than-
They're less than suburban or rural fees.
So you pay less mobility fees when we actually have to build you a road to support you? I think about that.
But you're trying to limit the roads you have to build by concentrating the development there.
I, I don't want to get into all, that's a-
I don't either.
That's a, that's a two-hour discussion.
Probably a two-month discussion, David.
Next time we update our mobility fees, we'll happy to have that conversation with you. How about that?
To me, that makes a difference. That's a difference we had. I recall the discussion last year when we were voting on the case. And I recall the newspaper article about the discussion when we voted on the case centered around what we see today. We were, we were told by the applicant, you should approve this because this is all going to be a four-lane highway. And we said, no, no, what we see here today is a two-lane rural road. And we were told at the time that, where there was no evidence presented at that hearing, that there was any imminent plan to widen that road. It wasn't on any capital improvement project. But if it is on a CIP, which, if you're telling me that's what it is, that's different, that's a different situation than what we looked at a year ago. If the road, to me, if that roadway widening is imminent, I don't know how, if you're going to have a four-lane divided road, that it becomes im, not practical or impractical not to look at the higher density along that roadway. I can tell you this, if they built a four-lane roadway in front of my property, I'd move.
If I could add to that, this property is also has the interstate on the side of it.
Well, you weren't here last year, but we talked about that. I, I remember in my discussion, and I actually went back and listened to it before coming here and today. I also said I recognized what was going on with Connected City on the side of the interstate, that that was going to be a highly urbanized area. So I recognize that it's pushing in that area.
My only point is that it, it is somewhat difficult to protect a piece of property that has interstate visibility. It's hard to protect the rural character. That's, that's my point.
We're, I mean, again, Hore-Tuin's cleaning up a map here. We're not changing anybody's density. That whole discussion can be had again.
I, I understand that, Jamie, I understand that. And I think for, for those of us that work and operate in this world, we operate in the world of land use entitlements and land use and land developments. The people that are sitting in the audience don't.
Sure, I get it, I understand.
So to them, this is, you're taking my rural area.
Right, and I think that's important for them to understand, correct.
Another comp plan amendment, again.
And the reason I brought up the mobility fee issue is, and I think it's important, is because our board intentionally had higher mobility fees in the rural area to help protect the rural area. That, that was an intentional decision by our board.
Yeah, I-
And so-
Remember you said it was a two-hour discussion?
Right. But, but my point is that they designated this area for urban mobility fees, which means they weren't trying to protect it for rural levels of density. If they had, they would have made it to higher rural fees.
Yeah, I'm not, I speak of it.
Where these people should be coming up and out currently is that the board tries to lower the fees in the rural area because that, to me, is a more conscious decision to say, now we're opening up the rural area for more development.
I, I'll just say this. The mobility fees get passed on to the homeowner, so the developer doesn't give a damn whether or not he pays high mobility fees or low mobility fees. So whoever came up with that cockamamie idea was-
Oh, you, Mr. Moody, if you'd been here when we did it, you would, you would have thought that we were killing landowners by putting rural-
Yeah.
Putting them in the rural mobility fee district, so-
I agree. And they just pass it on in the price of the house.
I'm just saying that the people that lobbied for those fingers didn't feel the same way that you feel. Otherwise, there wouldn't be two fingers there.
I'm not saying I don't support, I'm just saying, if you're going to develop a four-lane roadway there, then I'm not really sure how you protect the area anymore. If that is imminent, it's different. For me, it's different. We're talking if it's 10 years out. That's a different story than, than the people who live there have 10 years to enjoy their property before a highway, remind me of the Jethro Tull song, a farm on the freeway here, before the highway goes through their farm. But if it's imminent, if we're only four years out, that is a pretty short time to build a four-lane roadway, I can tell you that in my world, then I do think differently about that. Maybe it should be designated as part of the urban service area.
So the chair asked for a motion. Are you making a motion?
What's this? I keep waiting for, I keep waiting for a motion. Come on, somebody.
I haven't heard any of you guys make one yet either, okay? Because I know what the problem is. You're looking at these people going, what are you going to tell them when you make the motion? All right?
I have a feeling Mr. Jordy would have already made one if he wasn't-
Mr. Chair, I'm just telling you that because of that fact, that's different, that's different evidence than what we had a year ago.
That's right.
That would persuade me to include this, to approve the comp plan amendment. And yes, I'll make a motion to that effect. You can take that as a motion. But that's why I think differently about it than I did a year ago. It wasn't until Mr. Pedo showed me the purple line on the map. That's the big difference.
Okay, we have a motion on the floors or a second?
Yeah, I will second that. And I think that, you know, Mr. Tannell made a, a good case that if we're going to protect this area more, we can do it at a zoning level. And I think that's, you know, we're talking, to your point, Jamie, we're talking about a map correction here that should have never been made in the first place. We shouldn't have to be correcting this. So with that, I will second it.
Okay. Motion on the floor and a second. Is there any other discussion? Not all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Close. Motion carries.
That was our last item on the agenda. I just want to, assuming we are finished here, I just want to wish you guys happy holidays, happy new year, and we will see you January 9th in Dade City.
Thank you for your brief-
Likewise.
Thanks, Liam.
Your job was worked for today, Liam.
I'll move to a journey.
Motion to adjourn and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Richard, how did you get the short straw today?
Waterways and wildlife depend on you to keep them healthy. Excess fertilizer, grass clippings, trash, oils, and pet waste wash into gutters and storm drains when it rains. Stormwater carries these pollutants directly into our lakes and rivers, creating an unhealthy environment for fish, waterfowl, and other aquatic animals. Storm drains are meant for clean rainwater. Most other discharges are illegal. If you suspect an illicit discharge, please contact Pasco County Department of Public Works at 727-834-3611.
Hey, everyone. It's Jordan from Pasco Libraries, and I can't wait to share my picks for this month's Morning Blend Book Club. My first recommendation is She Soars: Trailblazing Female Pilots in Florida by Bridges Del Pont. This book offers a captivating look at the remarkable women who helped shape the history of aviation with Florida as a central stage for their groundbreaking achievements. From performing daring aerial stunts in the early 1900s to serving as WASP pilots during World War II and later flying military jets, commercial airlines, and space shuttles, 14 female aviators are celebrated for their bold and diverse contributions to aviation. This well-researched and inspiring collection not only honors these women's accomplishments, but also shines a light on Florida's significant role in their journeys. It's a must-read for anyone interested in aviation history. Next up is a fun book for the whole family, Fifty True Tales from Our Great National Parks by Stephanie Pearson is a collection of real-life tales- is a collection of real-life tales that celebrate the beauty and diversity of America's national parks. From the amazing return of Wolves to Yellowstone to the inspiring story of the Bransford family at Mammoth Cave, each story brings a unique piece of history, adventure or nature to life. The book covers everything from incredible animal behaviors to moments of human bravery, all tied to different parks across the country. With beautiful illustrations, it's a perfect read for families and young readers, offering a great way to learn about these incredible places. Last but not least, our youngest readers will love Fox vs. Winter by Corey Tabor. In this wintery tale, the lovable trickster Fox is feeling lonely as his friends head south for the season or go into hibernation. Desperate to avoid the cold and isolation, Fox decides to fight winter by making snow friends, but it's just not the same. Then he becomes friends with Rabbit, who loves the quiet solitude of winter. This sweet story is perfect for teaching kids about loneliness, the desire to belong and the importance of taking quiet time for themselves. Pasco Libraries wishes you a season of great reading.
You can read a story. You can go for a walk. So why not combine both? Welcome to our story walk. Here at JV Starkey Wilderness Park, we have installed a new story in our story walk. Check out this new seasonal theme title, The Very Lastly, by Steph Wade and illustrated by Jennifer Davison, where you'll learn about Lance, the cottonwood leaf, and how he must face his fear of falling with the change of the seasons. The story walk consists of 18 reading stations positioned along a .2 mile loop. Along the way, you'll also learn some fun facts about the changing colors of leaves. The outdoor reading experience allows children, families and people of all ages to read a story while walking along a nature trail. Head to the back left trail of the playground area, follow the purple trailblazers and you'll be on your way. A special thank you to all who partnered with libraries to make this project possible. Pasco County Parks, Recreation and Natural Resources, the Friends of the Pasco County Library System and AmeriCorps.